There have been declarations of public notices. And both Peter and Dean are missing tonight because they're both still traveling and they'll be here for the next meeting. So the first item on the agenda, public appearances, and seeing none, we'll move to correspondence and announcements.
Jared has one announcement to make?
Yes, our aquatics program has just been named Outstanding Aquatics Program of the Year by the Wisconsin Park and Records Association. So we will be awarded that in November at the Trulista. Catherine and her team does a phenomenal job.
Yeah, that's great.
Our aquatics are overall aquatics program. So everything from swim lessons to water exercise to ice swim.
That's great. Congratulations. Anything else? I know we have the, we had walk to school day, or walk or bike to school day. Winnaquah looked very successful. We had a meeting, so I wasn't, I didn't make it, but I passed a lot of people walking on the way.
I did.
And I know you made it. I know. And it was, and then next weekend is the Cottage Grove PTO Festival, Fall Festival, Saturday. Yeah, other than that?
This weekend.
Not this weekend, the weekend after.
The week of Saturday.
Anybody else?
Well, and I just wanted to mention, I sent this to Dan, just in case some of the kids back there are listening. There is an opportunity, they're looking for women at the state meeting in Milwaukee, and they're looking for experience without the equivalent half, and they're supposed to bring their own equipment, which you might be able to talk about Thursday night. So that was really nice. And then within the legislative arena, they did actually feature the district with Gary Hebal in an interview process, showing that we are active and we are involved. Positive, a little positive press. Oh, and the other thing I should prepare today was, this was meant positively, one, that the bus drivers in their area were really nice.
And they have two. And I also heard that on the walk to school today at Winnaquah, there were only eight kids on the bus, so lots of kids were participating. So that was a good thing.
Anything else? All right, then we'll move on and to administrative reports, and the first report is the superintendent report.
Okay, third Friday enrollment report, and you received several revisions throughout the week. The latest one is live on Board Docs now, and you also have a hard copy that was distributed tonight. We had a little bit of an issue with not getting the written numbers on there. So I think the report is pretty self-explanatory, just the key numbers you should be aware of. Total enrollment is on the bottom of page two, thirty-two eighty-five, we're up a total of eighty-six students from last year. Now, that's resident and open enrollment students, that's total students in the seats. And then on the next two pages are the open enrollment students, two-hundred-eighty-eight open enrollment in, eighty-five out. So our net increase of, increase of just over two-hundred students of open enrollment. And as you are well aware, you know, with the open enrollment numbers, where our waiting list is at, and so on. So those numbers are very close to what we, you know, had projected. The one thing that's always the biggest challenge is, particularly in late summer, students moving in and out of the district. And it always happens both ways and...
Did I see on here, I see on here Hayward, Merrow, how was it, Locka Shaw? They're obviously in our community.
Right.
So how is it, why would they be on here?
Virtual schools.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, so they actually, those districts that sponsor virtual schools, our students can open enrollment, open enroll out to participate in those programs. So, and I think you're probably aware, right next door, McFarland has a very large virtual, and that's how they get their revenue, is that students actually open enroll into that program.
Didn't think Hayward did.
So there are a lot of districts that have real small, similar to our alternative, you know, our charter high school, that spending a very small online opportunity.
What was our projection, do you know?
Um, I don't...
Total overall?
Yeah.
Our total is thirty-two sixty-ish. So we're up above the what we had this year.
Which, as you're well aware, that's a key number with our revenue limit as well as the A. So on there is meant to provide information, you know, for class sizes as well, at both GDS and the high school, where students are divided into different classes and not just home rooms. We gave actually all the different courses as well with those averages. So one of the things, and it's a lot of data, we didn't show a comparison to last year, but I will make note that if you recall, you know, we added four full-time positions at the high school in the four core academic areas, and it, as you would expect, it made a significant impact. You can see there's still class sizes that are, you know, really approaching and at the maximum of those guidelines, but definitely a very good improvement, those class size ratios.
And actually, we did have one email from a teacher thanking us for that, saying she noticed the difference this year, so.
Yeah.
And knew that some of her colleagues did as well.
That difference is, is, just so you know, significant. In two thousand and two, we had seven sections over thirty. In two thousand and thirteen, I think we had eight. And this year, we have four, and there are really only one or two that are core groups. So before, in these groups of seven and eight, these were classes that were math, science, English. The only one that you would really put your finger on in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, would be honors English ten, which is over. And the other factor with that is there are ninety-two students in those three sections, so that's ten percent of our class, of our high school population. So we've made dramatic increase. Again, if we hadn't added the four versus the two teachers, thank you, Lionel, and the rest of the board for that, this would have been significantly different. And by doing that much and making that commitment, we've clearly cut it over half. And then the other thing you can see, the only other class you'd start to start watching is the ninth grade English honors. So when I started to call about this, if by any chance you had a teacher teaching ninth grade honors and tenth grade honors, they'd have close to forty percent of the high school population in those classes, which are at or over guidelines. But, and there's a pre-calc that's high, but dramatically improved, dramatically. And we don't have, last year we did get the sections, a whole list of the sections from Glacial Drumelone, so we don't actually have that detail for that. But we, we have the averages. And you can see that, again, Cottage Grove School, third grade, if you look at your updated sheet, the first one you got showed those averages are like twenty, they're actually, Cottage Grove, third grade is twenty-four point one-seven, which is under max but over goal. And Glacial Drumelone, fifth grade, is same thing, twenty-five point four. And the interesting thing about that is, with you, if you take the total number of students, which is two-hundred-and-fifty-four into ten sections, that gives you a twenty-five point four average. If you take that into eleven sections, and again, sixth grade, generally, there's one teacher that teaches that class, so that would be the addition of one staff person. You can bring that down to twenty-three students. So again, knowing that there's a lot of volatility to the sizes and the changes, it's nice to keep track of that.
I guess one comment I would make is, yeah, I'm also very pleased where we're at, and we're a much better starting point than when we get to next year. One of the things, so you should be aware, when we look at, you know, what we're proposing for staff and making those determinations, certainly Jared and I look closely at what the board policy is on the guidelines and look for any, you know, where we're close to those maximums and red flag. When we meet with the principals, they are looking at it much more closely in that. They're aware of the policy, but they're also looking at the makeup of the class, and, and so there are many times that they might, you know, recommend, well, but with this class, you know, despite what the guideline says, we need to be lower for this reason or that reason. And so they have a real good feel for what really is, what we need to have to maximize instruction. And so we'll continue to have those discussions. We won't just say, well, we're there now and we're good. We'll continue to analyze that, and, you know, depending on our resources, if we can get them even lower in the future, we certainly would love to do that.
I would like to see if you look at that policy, because it's been a lot of years. And I looked at our policy, that's saying, basically says, you don't want to go very high by ten, you can't, which I wouldn't advise by the policy.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say it's been a lot of years.
No, it actually hasn't, it was sort of a pre-calc.
Because we usually take class very seriously. We did have to, you know, open it up a little bit, just due to cost, and that was a decision we made as a board. And once we were able to gather resources, we knew that's something that we did want to focus on. So I think we're at that point to what we made of legitimate moving in that direction this past year.
To move that way. And, you know, I, I know we have some challenges coming forward though, because we got a lot of, some of the class sizes are going to start getting bigger. And so that'll be interesting to see how we handle that, especially in contrast to open enrollment, because we're going to have, you know, I think next year, year following, all those classes start getting bigger.
Right.
Well, we did, we did actually, as a budget constraint, which was the point you made, increase the class size guidelines for middle school and high school. And if in fact financially, we're able to refinance that, and we now do now, I have to pay the teachers for that additional. Before, there was a significant expense when it was over. So we helped that and reduced that expense because of the collecting bargaining agreement, we had to pay for every kid on our guidelines. And that became expensive. So now that, that isn't part of the collecting bargaining agreement, and financially we've been more stable.
I'd say as a board, we should seriously consider re-looking at those guidelines. What we're doing is, we're saying, oh, thirty's okay, but in those science classes, we still don't always have enough room or...
I, I think this needs to come at a future time, that's not really a topic for the agenda tonight to discuss whether we're going to do the policy or not. And, you know, I think we have to, when we do, if we do decide to put that in the agenda, it would have to be in the context of the total budget, because we're also talking about salaries and other kinds of things, and it all comes out of the same house.
That was going to be my comment, my final comment on it is that, when we start talking about that, and you say, okay, well, we want to focus on that and make that our number one priority, you got to think about what else.
Something else, what else you have to give up.
So it's not just, oh, we got extra money, we need to, you know, get class sizes down to twenty-five, because then what else are we going to have to pay for?
Yeah, I have to say, I was pretty pleased with this too. I'm only seeing three actually over thirty, and only one academic core class, and I, so it's just a huge improvement, so anyway.
There actually are four, an honors English ten, a keyword comp apps, a PE two, and personal finance.
It's a personal, it's a PE one, I think. One of the classes, the max is thirty-five, and that's thirty-eight, I think, so. And then there was another one that's over thirty, but the max goes up to seventy, so yeah, anyway.
I didn't count that.
That's okay. Jeff, did you have another?
I was looking at grade school, actually. I thought twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five is really pushing the limit of where you want to be.
Yeah, and those we didn't touch, those happen the same.
And I think that, I mean, you say it's okay, it is okay, but it could be better.
Again, yeah, we'll put it on the agenda later.
I do have a question though. What do we, do we have a plan for next year at Glacial Drumelone? With what would be sixth and seventh grades being so among us?
Yeah, yes we do. And so, I mean, there's a couple of different options, but, you know, this tenant is well aware of what the projections are coming in and has a plan for how we're going to accommodate that.
When are we going to share that?
Well, anytime, I guess, we can talk about that when we start looking at those, you know, enrollment reports for next year, those preliminary reports, and, but, you know, she took me and walked through the building, said, here's what we need to do, and so we're fine. Yeah, we can share the report anytime.
But not tonight. We'll put it on the agenda for the topic, essentially. Okay, thanks.
And I think, just one more to follow up. When we looked at the elementary school, I think, at the time that we looked at, I think our numbers were really good, and that's why we didn't touch those, but as I was saying earlier, our numbers are starting to increase just due to population increase, which is, you know, a good thing, but that's, that's just kind of where we are right now.
All right, and then the second part of our report is an update on transportation. I meant to just give an oral report, and actually right before the board meeting, we just copied and pasted into the admin content on your board docs, so it's there as well. So it's essentially four different things that we're dealing with. The first issue was concern about buses arriving late to Winnaquah School, and so we did add an additional route. What had happened is, we were trying to maximize and have some of our buses run the Cottage Grove routes first, you know, to the high school, and then go and do the Manona routes, because they're so short, but we were having issues getting them on time. So we do have one new route that's dedicated just to the Manona runs, at some minimal cost, because it's just, and we talked about that previously. And that has, now these last couple of weeks following up, it has actually made a significant difference. And then you see also, we just made a minor adjustment on the high school route time by five minutes. So the winter routes, that was the solution. Okay, Cottage Grove Schools, you had heard a report that some of the buses were arriving late. They actually were not arriving late, but they were arriving right before the first bell, which is later than what we wanted, but the students were actually getting to class on time. So we did want to make an adjustment and try to get them there earlier, so it wasn't so rushed. And so one simple solution was just rearranging the order of what the buses went to the buildings, and made some minor route changes there that made a significant difference. And then we also adjusted some times by five to seven minutes. And one other additional transfer was the T-40 route. So very satisfied with those consistent times.
Has that worked? Because my daughter tells me she has not arrived in time for morning recess yet all year. So I haven't had time to follow up.
You mean in time for free time before school starts?
Right, right.
So she just has time to get there.
Get to school, right.
Okay. I guess I don't know the exact time offhand, but I'll follow up on that.
I just haven't had time to follow up, and I wasn't that big.
Well, and I, I guess we would need clarification what the goal is too. I mean, if kids are arriving in time to go get their stuff set and get to their class, I would think that's the goal.
It is.
I mean, we provide supervision only because some buses do come at different times. I know kids look forward to that, but I'm not, so I, but I think that's what you would need to look at.
That's why I wanted to look into is what was the exact time for the goal, but as you stated, I don't, I'm pretty certain that wasn't the plan, to make sure they're early enough for that, is to make sure plenty of time.
And what was it last year, right? I mean, that's, it'd be nice to know.
So.
And, I mean, it's not a discussion here, but when you eliminate another recess and eliminate that recess, that takes a whole different...
Yeah, I guess, I guess I don't know that we ever looked at that as a recess. I mean, that, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we provide supervision because some students get dropped off quite early, and we try to supervise, but it's not considered a formal recess. I mean, there's not, I would be surprised if, I mean, I guess I don't think...
No, it's, it's, keep in mind, at Winnaquah, we, the students don't go outside, they go right into the building. And that's something we've talked about. In fact, that's what I prefer they do, to get in right into the library and actually maybe read, and, and, I didn't mean to be sarcastic.
Yeah.
But, but they, but if, there are some logistic issues why we're not doing it in the Cottage Grove School. Winnaquah is a wonderful program, where, you know, as far as that setup, when they get in there, that we have a place to supervise them. They have a little bit easier, better space issue as well. But that would be ideally what we'd like to do, is get them into the building and get learning started right away.
All they know is what happened last year, because it was in third grade.
Right, yeah.
They didn't have time to...
Yeah, so it's just a change. And see, we would have looked at it as they got there early and had to have supervision. I mean, that's all I'm, it's a different way to look at it. I see from a student's standpoint how they might think, yeah, I liked that better last year when I had more time to socialize, but yeah, right, right, yeah, but, yeah.
Okay. All right, and then, third issue, there was a concern brought by a couple of parents about our buses being over capacity. That was never the issue, take that somewhat very closely. The big change is that our buses, though, we are filling them up to be more efficient. We had a lot of only half-full buses in the past. For up through first grade, we do have three in a seat. They're, you know, small bodies. By the official capacity of the buses, three a seat, you know, for all students, we would never, you know, we don't do that, but, but they are filled, but every student has a seat, there's no one standing. Our drivers know that that is absolutely not allowed, and so we actually, though, we had one bus that was very full, and we did make some changes to, you know, reduce it to even them out a little bit, so. Okay, and then the last thing, as far as ongoing, was regarding to our hazardous plan, and we are going to request a review from the Sheriff's Department in the, you know, Cottage Grove area, because, you know, it's been some time since that was completed, and looking at those walk zones, you know, it's just time to update it. And we do believe there's some places right now that are not considered hazardous that probably should. And, and I appreciate, you know, Jared being proactive on that, because many districts would try to not have those labeled hazardous to save on transportation costs, but we certainly want to look at, you know, what's the right thing in the wellbeing for our students, and if that means expanding transportation, we will. And that is something we are going to look at for next year as well, is kind of re-examining, examine all of our walk zone areas in both, you know, the city of Manona and the village of Cottage Grove, and have a board discussion about whether we want to remain with that policy or consider some changes.
Yeah, and I guess part of maybe why some of those, those areas have changed, we've had a lot of construction that are, you know, opened up some new roads and built some new housing, so that's one of the reasons.
One of the other things, I guess I was looking for on this, was the, we talked about, was maybe like some sort of implement weather plan, because one of the problems was, I guess on a rainy day or a snowy day, how the buses get backed up, because you've got more parents dropping off at school, which pushes the buses, you know, further back and make those students even later.
Yeah, we did discuss that, and what we came to the conclusion, and talking as well to other districts, and that is just an issue that is always going to happen, there's so few days that we have the implement weather. However, however, we did actually have something that is going to help solve that problem at all times, including the implement weather. If you remember, the one issue was things being backed up by the stoplights by GDS. We actually have found it, or I shouldn't say Jared and Nelson, has found it quicker to actually go around instead of going through the stoplight area there, and they're avoiding, you know, that traffic, and...
Go around there.
So they go through Damascus stoplight, they turn left, there's a Cork Street, right past CBS.
Okay.
And then they're able to come in on Manley.
Oh, okay.
Instead of sitting at that stoplight, because many of the families are coming from in there.
Yeah, and I guess that's kind of what I was thinking of, like alternate, be an alternate route for maybe buses only, as opposed to buses and cars.
And we only have two driveways into GDS, and I think once more parents are getting into that routine as well, that will help as well. So, but yeah, we've changed that road, so they're not trying to turn at the stoplight, you know, going down to Cork Street, and then left on Manley and coming in there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
What about the buses coming from, I guess, coming...
From Taylor Prairie, where the Cottage Grove is. So then they're going all the way up along, I can't remember what that last road is, and then coming left down Damascus.
So they're turning, or they're turning right?
Yes. So they're not all trying to come in at the Damascus area, because that was the, the holdup. And we've also been in contact with the Village of Cottage Grove Police Department, and they're also monitoring it, and we're also having some, they monitor some of our Cottage Grove, because on highway end, it's getting backed up as well. So, and that's just, we just have a number of families that are utilizing transportation, not only on the buses, but dropping kids off, so.
Any other questions? All right, then, next item, we originally had scheduled a report by the Director of Student Services on Blaine, and we've decided to postpone that until the October twenty-second meeting.
I think it's a comment, yeah. And if you recall, last year, Scott Brown presented, and we had basically just the raw data that we've reported to DPI, and several board members had, you know, several different follow-up questions, which were all great questions. And so we wanted to make sure, this is a really important issue, that, you know, we had complete information that all the board members really wanted. So when Scott put together his first draft, I actually did share it with a couple of board members, solicited some feedback to make sure, okay, what else would you like to see? And so, so I would like to move it back and give him time, and he got some great feedback. And also, those of you that were not contacted, if you, the initial report is still on board docs, if you could please take a glance at, if you have other things too that you really would like to see, please just send an email to Scott and myself, or let me know, and we'll make sure we add that, because it, we want to make sure it's a complete report. We really like to get in writing and not just rely on him to give a, you know, verbal report, and he certainly can answer, you know, follow-up questions as well, but, you know, to be, look at what's happening in every building, it does mean him meeting with every principal individually, and, you know, which he's done, but to make sure we have that follow-up, so.
Okay. I had actually sent Dan a few specific questions, but I did actually find the report from last year and my notes from last year. And one of the questions, which was similar to what I asked you, which was asked at that meeting, was my question. How do we account for the difference between incidents and reports from last year? And it was similar this year in that, you know, what, what's an incident? So what the policy requires is that you report out the number of reports of bullying. So every time somebody reports bullying, that's a number that we're supposed to hear. And then what Dan explained was, then there is an investigation and there's occurrences. So then whatever the occurrences are, no action, action, false report, whatever.
Well, yeah, I think you, actually, you and I both asked for the clarification, and I had sent something prior to your questions going in. So that is...
And it was from last year too.
That's clearly one of the questions.
Great. Great.
And I guess one of the things I'd like to see, I'm not sure if we've included that already, was what are we doing proactively as far as, as far as education, or things that we're doing in the schools or whatever, to educate the students on ways to identify, you know, just the proper way to go about it, to prevent some of these incidents from occurring, I guess, would be my thoughts.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and he had listed some programs, but I think what he'll do is talk about kind of where some of those are, what grade levels and stuff, yeah, that will happen.
Well, and that just relates directly to another one of the things I'd sent to Dan, and that was the comparability. So even if we just go back one year, what were the reports last year, what are the reports this year, and what do you feel made a difference? If it's, if we've improved, I think we really did a nice job of doing this, of this list of things, that kind of piece. Because without any comparability, we don't know where we are. We don't know whether we've grown or not.
Yeah, that's something to think about. I guess I, I don't know that we need to do a thumbs up, thumbs down on that, but that's something I guess I defer to Scott, of whether he thinks that's, how relevant that is when you're dealing with regular, sort of relatively smaller numbers, and they're sort of similar, and they may be different kids, and, you know, it's just, I think we have to be careful about assuming we can make those comparisons all the time. Jessica?
Yeah, I was just going to make that comment. It's a really good question, but, you know, as kids change and graduate from school, I mean, we really can't compare how well we're doing, you know, when we're talking about the program. So, I mean, that's, it would be great, it would be a great data point to have, but I think that it would be difficult to find it.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's more relevant over a lot of years, than one year, the next year, the next year. I, that's just my personal, and I defer, as I said, to Scott.
More of a climate.
Right.
Overall climate issue, that's what it's kind of...
Well, if we're, if we're devoting resources to improving that, then I would suggest that at some point in time, maybe not what I'm asking for, there is going to be data that's going to show...
Right, and that's what I said, over a longer period of time.
Little question about, I mean, that's got to be a long-range goal. We'd like to have a, you know, a bully's true story. The ideal is to shoot for zero incidents, and so you're right, we should see it trending over time and, so, but that is the important point to look at, how, not to misinterpret the data, but, but we should be able to speak to that. Do we feel like we're getting better, and is the data supported, or other things, as you mentioned?
Yeah.
Or they may even show you a class, which we have, we have been able to do in the past, that there was a specific class that needed additional resources, because you could see it coming right through the numbers in the schools. Just helps you identify where you can help.
So anyway, the point was, if you, if you do have other thoughts, after you look at the report again, send them to Dan, and make sure that gets included as much as is appropriate to include. Okay. On the next topic, we have the topic of discussion of canine searches, and we have Paul Frost who's here, and it's John.
Officer Polatone said, yeah, I asked him to be here at seven-thirty.
Oh, okay.
And Jen was changing, so he's here, and he's, and Dave likes to share, I'd be happy.
Well, why don't we just move on to the next item, and then we'll come back when he comes, that makes sense to me.
I'd like to answer a question, if you want to start, we can wait.
Nah, we can just wait, let's just wait, and then he can hear what you say, and it won't be, you know, that makes more sense, I guess, so.
You should be here more than Jared.
Okay, so we'll move on to discussion items, and the first item is implementation items, and the first item is implementation of the communication plan.
Okay, we had this on the agenda last month through the community hall meeting, and I gave you some information of a proposal for some cost estimates for some additional work consulting services. And there's some questions about, okay, well, what have we actually paid so far? And so, great question. So on your board docs, you do have a document that shows a detail of itemized billing for all of last year, the 13, 14 school year. Now, in there is a combination of website work, consulting work, and hands-on things with, you know, things like newsletters and so on. And so, I think where the initial question came is on the estimate for the website work, it said $5,000 in additional cost. Well, does that include work that's already been done? Is that from this point forward? That is the estimate based from July 1st moving forward. Okay, so now into October, so it does include work that was already completed. And in a minute, I want to actually show you the first preview of what the new website will look like, and you might be wondering, okay, we've been talking about this for months, now when is that darn thing going to go live? And we had a good discussion today, and actually appreciated Susan's comment about, you know, trying to get everything perfect, and really making it, you know, exactly as we wanted. And where we're getting held up is just trying to buy all that content, make sure every page is exactly as we want it, because a lot of the pages that we want to move over from the old website just weren't done very well. So instead of moving them over, we also want to update them, and that's what's taking so long. But we're to the point now, we need to get that live. And so, there'll be a couple of things that we can just simply inactivate on the short term, but at least get the other good work up and going. So the expectation is absolutely that the next board meeting, it'll be there. But if you don't mind, I'd like to just show you really quickly on the screen, just a sampling of what it looks like, or will look like. Get it on the TV screen? Sorry. So, I'll see if the big screen's a little easier to see. Okay, so this is a sample school site, Winnicott School, and all the pictures are our own students. We did have a photographer come in and take many photos, so we're not just putting in photos from, you know, that we purchased or anything. The one thing we spent time on is making sure on the left navigation menu that we have consistency on every school. And really, a lot of thought, what is the information parents need to see? On the school site, that's the primary person viewing it, is the parents, and then of course, sometimes students as they get older. And the contact information, upcoming events, and so on. So you'll see, it's a much cleaner look, and then, you know, adding those current events and keeping it up to date. So, that's an example of the main page of a school site, where the real work happened last spring, and we talked about in the setup. If you look at the menu, okay, this is, first of all, a much better setup about, instead of having everything on the left navigation. So we talked a lot over and over, what is the information that we want to share with all the various stakeholders? What do the community people want to see? What do parents need to see? What do students need to see? Perspective parents was a real big thing to focus about, people looking to move into the community. And so, you see, that was where the real planning happened. This is what was finished by last June, was all the planning piece of what are we actually going to have on this website? And then who's going to be in charge of creating that content, and so on. Okay, so that's the welcome information. Then we moved to the district, and organizing it by the Board of Education pages, district departments, program services, and then how to contact us as well. We do have a lot of the information complete on the Board of Education page. One of the things, you know, well, if you just click on the main Board of Education, and then from there, we can scroll to any of those different pieces as well. So on the main page, we talk about, here's where the full information is on board docs. We also have the board docs here. Under the main navigation on top, you can also get to the board docs. So there's three different ways that you can get to it, to make it easy to find. And then from there, you know, worked hard about, okay, how to access Board of Education medium information, the explanation, how to get directly to the board docs, and so on. And so there's multiple ways of getting to the information. If you want to know, you know, about the broadcasts and so on, of course, the policies, board committees, and, oops, and your information is there as well, contact with pictures that were taken by a photographer, you know, last spring. So, and this is what we want to do with all of our staff. We want to make sure that parents are able to contact their teachers easily, find that contact information. How do I email them? What's their direct, you know, phone, and so on. So that's a lot of the background, you know, that we're doing. So those are the main pages. On the district departments, here's an example, on the business services. We want to, again, we want to introduce, who is the business services staff? What do they do? Okay, so Jared is the director of the staff, his contact information, the staff members that are part of that. And then, this was actually cloned over prior to the annual meeting, so the new annual meeting stuff is not on here, it will be when it goes live. But what are the key information that the public wants to know? Budget information, annual meeting, audit reports, student fees. We can add additional, but those are the big ones, instead of cluttering it up with all these different things, trying to make it easy, you know, to find. So that's the sample of the district department pages, you know, all the different programs and services that we have, mentioned the schools. This is, you know, basically, you know, Andrew's section, teaching and learning is what we're all about, and all the different programs, the student parent resources, and then as a family, what are the things that we want to find there? Staff resources, oh, I'm sorry.
Kids aren't kids.
They are. Yeah, all the pictures are from our kids. Yeah. So that was a conscious decision. We really wanted to make sure that we, you know, did that, personalized it. And just so you know, as a point of information, the photographer, we hired a local photographer to do all that work for us. Joyce has coordinated all that. We have a huge bank of pictures, spent time in every school, and so we have a bank to draw from, you know, so we can keep those fresh as well. I know I'm kind of going quickly, so, yeah, please jump in if there's questions. I'm not going to show you all these pages, because not all of them are complete, we're still trying to, you know, fill them in. So this is where we're looking at, you know, as we're doing these final stages, some of these pages are still, we're transferring data over, some we want to rewrite, but we're going to have to make that decision here in the next two weeks. We want to, we want to get it live. And so, we'll decide, okay, what are the final ones we really need to get? What are the ones that's okay if we inactivate for now and fill in the contact and make them live as we get them. So, this has taken longer than we wanted to, but we want to make sure what we have, every page is quality and has up-to-date information. Up on the top, this menu, the meals menu, of course, is a primary thing that parents and students want to find right away, the student links, staff directory, and then staff resources, there's a lot of things that we are going to make that password protected. Now, a lot of this stuff isn't necessarily confidential, but when you look at payroll forms and so on, that's not things that the general public, you know, needs to see. So, on a separate link, all teachers already have a password to get into the website where they can do their own personal pages. We'll need to remind them of that password, and many of them probably aren't using it, but it'll be really easy for them to find. And then we'll certainly reorganize all that information also. Access to the Facebook page. Right now, we have some school Twitter pages, we don't have a district one yet, but we'll have that link. The Infinite Campus is the student information system that we use. So, and to really make sure all those things are clean-looking but easy to find. So when I stop there and...
Dan, if you wanted to see our student assessment, where would that be?
Under the teaching and learning. And so, that would be one page, and also, I think some of that has to come under, you know, the schools. But this has one of the pieces that's not on there.
But it will be in it.
Absolutely, that's a real key piece.
So we could click, even if it links us to the DPI.
Right. Right now, we have a sample page that takes us to the DPI page, and one of the things, I promise this is easy to navigate, and also, and I'm not finding it.
Like our report cards?
Exactly. That the parents should be able to come to our website, find the links to get to the DPI report cards.
Okay, but don't we want to put our report cards on our website?
Yes, well, I mean, the link would take it directly to ours, through the DPI site, but it'll be right to Minona Grove, part of the DPI site.
And then, we had talked about this, the plan of where you're going to put the job descriptions?
Yep, that'll be under the policy piece. So, right now, we transferred over the board policies. And that was our original idea, to just, on the bottom of this, here's job descriptions. I think we might rethink that. Where are people logically going to go? Maybe it's under the human resources, you know, department, or maybe we cross, that's a nice thing, we can cross-link it. We could have a link at the human resources tab, as well as the board policy piece, to take it to the same place. But, you know, so that absolutely needs to be on there.
And the enrolled, things like the enrollment report?
You know, all those reports that come up, I think those are ones that every time that we have reports, we'll have that discussion. Is this something that, you know, so honestly, on board docs, is it something that we want to have on the website? And the questions we need to ask ourselves is, who is the audience? Who is looking for what? In that example of enrollment, yeah, I think that's something that people would like to know, and be very easy to take the report from tonight and put it on there. The key is that we're putting it, you know, we have a system to make sure it's going to the right place, and it stays up to date, and so on. So that's part of the planning as well, is who's responsible for that? It can't be a single person. Basically, anything under the business services, Jared has oversight, it won't be him. Well, he actually is talented enough, he'll do a lot of the posting himself, but, you know, who and his staff will keep that up to date? And he's responsible to keep everything under business services up to date, not rely on one webmaster for the entire district.
So if we do, if you had done the enrollment report tonight, it would be reasonable at the end of the report to ask if you plan to post it, so that you could tell us then where we would go.
Yeah.
So for instance, the annual report, you've always put that as a business services app. Okay, I'm just just as an example.
Yeah.
I would, I would, I'd probably put the enrollment report there, too, and I think that that is one that people are, because we do get questions, well, how many people? We got those today, this morning.
And I think when we have something that's in a PDF format, that we think anyone might be interested, why not put it out? I mean, it's easy to do, you know, and so...
I apologize if I missed this before, when you were on the individual school site, but I remember when we were first talking about the communication plan and rebuilding the website, that one of the things that we didn't want to lose sight of was that report bullying.
Yes.
Bullseye. Is that on the individual?
It will be, yes. Yeah, and what we want to do is make it look a little fit in, cleaner, but it needs to be, so you can find it as well. Yep. And that's something Scott will report next in the meeting, about how many of those came through that system as well.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
Versus in school.
Yeah.
Well, it was actually on this report, I think.
Okay.
He can elaborate on how that works.
Okay. Anything else on the website this time?
No, it looks great.
Yeah, I like it a lot. It's a lot cleaner, a lot easier to use. I mean, you can just, I think it's, I'm impressed with.
Thank you.
Well, it'd be fun for us to do a report and be able to add a comment about whether or not it would be helpful to have posted, that kind of thing. That'd be nice to do.
Okay, so then, the other thing I wanted to share with you tonight with regard to the communication plan, on that proposal, I posted it again, I'd like to go through item by item and tell you what my intention would be on each of those things. We did not sign a contract, nor am I proposing that we sign a contract with CISA 6 for a comprehensive plan. What we'd like to do is go one by one, and so the website is one clearly that we needed to do, and so it's a pay-as-we-go thing for that work.
Going on the $16,000 or the $23,000?
Are you, we're looking at, are you looking at this?
Oh, I'm sorry. The one that says, yeah, thank you for fielding that up. The one that says proposal.
Okay.
Communication services.
Right.
So we have to pay $5,000 more to get this website working?
Yes. Most of that work's already been done, that's moving back to July 1st. Okay, and that will be...
If she doesn't?
They've already done it.
They've already, they're in the middle of it. I mean, she's, I don't know if you want to talk about that, I don't know if she sent you.
Sure, here's, let me explain what CISA's done compared to what we've done. Okay, with CISA, the planning of it was a combination, working with their staff on determining, what are we going to have on the website? So that was all the preliminary work done last spring to make that determination, here's what we're going to have on it. Now, to actually get it, and then the graphic design piece was their staff that did that. Now, to actually load the content on, on a lot of it, we're writing the content and simply giving it to them, you know, put it on here, you know, clean it up. On some of it, their staff is actually taking our old stuff, moving it on to the new. And so it's a combination of work that we're doing and their staff as well.
So I guess what I'm asking, if we say no to the $5,000, where does that leave us?
Um...
If we have it mostly built?
Right, that, well, that work is ongoing.
It's, so it's, so the answer, I think, and I might be wrong, but I think you're saying part of the $5,000 has already been spent, part of it has not.
Correct, right.
So, because part of it is done, some of the schools, the content's pretty much done, some of them it is not, and she's kind of...
So we're voting on a proposal that...
For example, she...
We're not voting on anything.
We're not voting on it.
I've authorized...
We're not voting on this proposal that we're on. We're not going to vote on this proposal.
No.
It's $23,000 we're just going to spend.
No, we're not going to spend it. So, if you don't mind, can I come back to that?
Let Dan just go through and explain this, and then if you have questions, that might be a better way to approach it, I think.
All right. What I'd like to do is say which parts of this that we'll do, we're not, we are not going to accept this, I'm not recommending this proposal. If I recommended it, the whole thing would be something that would require board action to do all these things. And I'm recommending that we don't do all these things on here, that we're going to piecemeal, you know, each of these separately. Some of these, not all. So, so the website is one that's been an ongoing project, and so it's a combination of our work, some of it's consulting, some of it's actually physically, you know, doing the creation and so on. And so, that's been an ongoing piece. The annual district newsletter report is complete, you've seen the finished product, and as far as what they did on that, they did the design. We provided the content for it. What we've done in the past, if you remember the packet that always went, that you got at the annual meeting, we had mostly the budget information that Jared presented, and there were some reports written by principals, and that we sent to a local printer to do. Instead of paying for that binding, we instead created that annual report with some of that information, some of it was new. And what CISA did is, did the design, basically. It was their people, with the graphic arts people, that did the design piece. We got the template, brought it back to our local printer, and did the printing. Okay, so that was treated as a single project.
I just wanted to clarify, because I specifically asked you who had written the articles.
Right.
They wrote the articles.
A couple of the articles.
Yeah, some of the musical.
I understand, not the business section, which Jared did, and not the assessment piece, which Andrew did. But the actual articles were not written by us.
Right, we had, those feature articles were written by a writer from CISA 6. Those were actually created last spring, or this summer, as feature articles that are also going to go on our website. So, okay, so that's a standalone project that we would do with or without, if we did do it with CISA 6, we'd do it with someone else. And we did it with their staff. The district profiles and individual school profiles, I have not authorized those yet. Those are information that if we do that and want to have a printable thing that we're able to distribute for parents and so on, it would come from information that we have on the website. And so it'd just be a matter of putting that, again, in a format, in a clean format, kind of like that annual report, be a single page or a trifold. And so we could use their services to create the graphic design and have them printed locally. We haven't done that at this point. That's something, we'll make that decision, whether we think that's something that we want to have or not. The e-newsletters are complete. The staff newsletter, we started doing last spring. You know, as far as the work that CISA 6 did, they did the graphic design for each of the five schools, and then they also provided training for our school staff about how to use the e-newsletter. And so that's complete, and we've been using that.
So, so this would be to continue to use their staff?
No, so we're done. It's a one-time fee for the setup, and now we're totally doing it on our own. So it's no longer done.
Those are the school newsletters.
School newsletters, correct.
Not staff, okay.
Yeah, the staff was, that was part of the same setup, that was done previously, though.
So the school newsletters are still the newsletters that we've seen that are coming out monthly?
Correct.
Okay. The staff newsletters are the emails that you've been sending?
No, there's a similar format that you see in the school newsletters. We do that for the internal staff newsletter as well, monthly. It's the exact same format. It's distributed by email, but it's in that format.
And we see that?
Yes, you do.
Okay, because I knew we got a newsletter, but it looked more like an email, okay.
It's a similar.
And then, so that, is that a, is this cost then something that eventually, when we approve, or what, while you're saying this is the cost that's already been incurred?
Yeah, right. So every one of these are, when we look at costs, you know, things like printing and so on, those are all individual items, you know, these sorts of costs that we do all day-to-day in the budget, that, you know, are approved by Jared or myself. And so these are things, all, instead of having a plan, this, these are all authorized individually. So they're not part of a consulting service or anything like that, or there's no kind of contract.
But so the district profile and the individual school profiles are things that would still be...
If we choose to do those, this is what their cost estimate would be.
Okay. So how often does the staff newsletter come out?
Monthly.
Okay. And so we've had two?
They started, yeah, they started August 9th and September 24th. Oh, for this year. Yeah, didn't we start?
We had in the spring as well.
One in the last spring.
Oh, sorry, the school year. Yeah.
And we do send those to the board, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm lost on how much of this $23,700 is paid out of the $16,315?
So, can you give that in like, one minute? Get back that question? Okay. The last two pieces, I am not going to, the press releases and feature stories, the ones that I mentioned that they've done previously, those are already paid for. Those are part of the sub-work that we did last spring before July 1st. We are not going to do any additional ones. So in the future, any feature stories, we'll write them ourselves. That would be the cost if we wanted to do more of them. But, you know, we have so few press releases and so on, that's something that we'll handle internally. Likewise, the last thing, the monthly consulting, we are not going to have them on call as a consulting service. So we're not going to spend that $12,000. Likewise, the last thing, the monthly consulting, we are not going to have them on call as a consulting service, so we're not going to spend that 12,600. So the bottom line is of this total cost estimate of 23,700, you take away those last two items, it's about $10,000 worth of expenses that we, on individual pieces, that we have or will work with CISA VI on. Some of these things are already done and we're in the process of being billed. In fact, all of them are in the process. There's no new things being started.
So that 10,000 is part of the 16,315?
16,315.
16,315 is what we've already paid them.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. So this is everything from July 1 on. These are beyond that.
On this, on this sheet, it's July 1 on.
Right.
So this is going to cost us 26,000?
Well, that comes out to 9,600.
How do you get that July 1?
Oh, because, well, you're adding it on to last year, so okay.
So total amount that we will pay CISA for various services, that is correct.
Right, gotcha.
And how much was the photography? Because I don't see that in there.
Right, because that was done locally.
That wasn't through CISA VI, it was done as a separate.
But it was still part of the website build?
Well, it was, it was our, it was the district office, it was our choice to do that, I mean, not our, but I mean, it was the district's choice to do that, it was separate from this. We could have asked CISA VI to come in here and do photographs, or we could have done so, you know, that, and I was, there are different ways you could have done that, but we, it's not up to them. Maybe, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I.
How much it was?
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
We've already paid, I mean, this was done last spring. I have no idea. $1,000?
$1,000, okay.
So we don't have to, we're not, we're voting on this 10,000?
Correct.
Right.
So if we brought this as a proposal for a contract, then of course, yeah, we bring it, these are all separate individual projects. That we could have done through CISA VI, we could have done through CISA II, we could have done through private people. They just happen to have a communication staff that has all these various things. Some of it is consulting, some of it is their graphic arts people, some of it is the website. Those are all separate projects. And for many of those, it's much cheaper going through, you know, they're a nonprofit, they're a consortium, as you know, that CISA's are, it's much cheaper doing there than going through private firms in many cases. Plus they specialize in school services. So the point of, I guess, the discussion is to talk about, okay, how are we implementing the things that were in the communication plan? And some of these, you know, have costs, other things are, we're just set up, and we're, from this point on, we are not needing the outside help and will continue on ourselves. I will say, part of that last one, why we're not going to, why I'm not going to continue on with them as consulting, to get us off the ground, you know, with the key projects, the websites and the newsletters and so on, and talk about what sort of things and how we're going to communicate, I think was really helpful. Ultimately, we need our internal staff to be able to do those things. We can't send out to people, you know, from the outside. And, and in fact, that's been the recommendation right from the get-go from Doreen Dofsky, is you need your own person. Here's what I can do for you. Having your person in district is really the way to go. And so that will be the final piece that I do as we complete this website project. Okay, the next thing is for me to put together a proposal about how are we going to handle it internally. There's lots of options about, do we have people and staff that we can look at rearranging job description and, you know, divvy some of this up? Do we need to, some additional, hire someone additional, whether it be full-time or part-time? At the minimum, if there's additional hires, it would be part of next year's staffing plan. If it would be possible that we could fit it into second semester, depending on where our budget's at, I guess that would be a consideration, but that wouldn't be an expectation. But we eventually want to be able to do all this stuff in-house. Now, even if we have our own communications person, we still send stuff out to printers and that sort of thing, and some of it may very well still be more cost-effective to go through CISA VI's graphic arts people than, you know, someone else. Those are things that we'll figure out where the, you know, the cost effectiveness is.
Okay, Susan.
Dan, could you, so effectively, our, when we talk about implementation of a communication plan, it's just been a little bit confusing because we had this 16-page plan from you and Doreen, which was moderately confusing. And now has been significantly clarified and modified. So, right now, what you just reviewed as scope of the work plan is effectively off this CISA proposal and the things they proposed. So, could we have an updated document that basically says communication plan with a date on it, that basically says, instead of all this other 16 pages of like, develop social media presence and strategy and photography and just, you know, difficult to pull out what we are doing, just a list like?
Checklist, here's what we've done.
So it says, website in progress, pending completion on such and such a date, annual district newsletter report, that's done for this year. District profile, I was a little confused about that.
So that we have authorized, that would be, right.
And then, individual school profiles are also part of it?
Correct.
Okay. And then e-newsletters, that format and the CISA work is done?
Yes.
Okay. And press releases and future stories, no, we're going to do that internally, and monthly consulting to implement all of the projects, at least right now, is going to be done internally.
Right. If there were a special thing that we really felt we needed, but no, we're not signing any kind of contract for consulting services. And the expectation is no, that after the website's done, we're done with consulting.
And I, but I think there were things on that larger plan that we're not throwing out. I mean, I want to keep that larger plan, because there are other things on there that I think.
As we move along.
Well, not, yeah, that I still want to do. I mean, I hope we're still interested in doing those, but I think the point was, these are the very specific items that Dan would like, that he's recommending that we continue with CISA VI on. So I don't, I mean, I think we could go back and do a checklist, okay, here are the things that are done, here are the things that are still being done, but that's, the point of this sheet is, this is what, as I understand it, you're recommending.
Actually, it's a little more than that, because what you said is he's doing with CISA VI. Dan has just said, again, it's a nice list.
Well, this, this specific proposal is CISA VI, correct? These figures on it.
I understand that, but you took at least two elements, and you was talking about doing those internally.
Correct, so, to put in writing which ones are being.
The list and then how they're assigned.
Yep, fair enough. And the other thing to keep in mind, that 16-page document you mentioned, is meant to be a working document, and so the expectation would be that, you know, at some point later in the school year, okay, here's what we've done, now what are we going to do next? And it might be things that are in that plan, it might be revisions from there, but the idea is to continue to try to do more and not just say, oh, we're done, we've done our communication.
Right, it is ongoing.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. It's kind of an ideas list of, here's things that not only can, but should be done.
Right.
But yeah, that's fair.
I don't understand how we spent 27,000 on what that bill we didn't vote on. Or did we vote on it? I didn't, we voted on, I mean.
No, no, the whole, the website is only, is not the entire 27,000 dollars.
We did commit to doing the website, and because it wasn't a contract for a specific item, and it was billed separately, and part of it was last year's budget, part of it's this year's budget, you can look at the total over two years, but that's how it doesn't, you don't, you don't approve a full contract necessarily, which we didn't, and we didn't do that. So if you're questioning.
It seems like we broke policy here.
No, I'm saying we did not break policy because of that, because it was not a single item cost with a contract. It was.
Well, we had a loophole to get out of policy, to break policy.
Well, you can call it a loophole if you want. I mean, I wouldn't look at it that way, but if you want to call it that, that's fine. I, well, personally, I am in agreement with doing the district and school profile, because those are things I know we've talked about for a long time. I would really like to see us do that.
I, for certain, the district makes sense. That's kind of the thing you'd give to the realtors, you know, the trifold they can hand out, so.
And just to have it on the website, I, you know, I think that, I do think, I think that's.
The school one, possibly, I guess I want a little more of, okay, what's the purpose of that? Is it, what's different besides just looking at the school website?
Well, we only have, we don't, it's not like we have, I guess, multiple schools, you know, to really choose from. It's like, okay, if I live in this area, this is where my kids want to go. It's not like you're in a big metropolitan city where you kind of have your pick, you know, of where to go, so I don't know.
Yeah, and you're right, it would be a more matter of finding out what's, what's different than what people are going to see on the website, because they will see numbers of kids and programs, yeah.
I would like, just following your thought, to continue to explore, being able to do that either internally or with local community contacts. We do have people.
The district profile and the school?
Well, I would say both. I just think.
Well, I think the district, I think we're pretty much in agreeance on. But I think most of the schools will be probably covered under the district.
Right, I'm just saying, I still struggle with the feel of somebody else who writes a document that isn't, doesn't feel like me.
I don't know. I guess just my two cents, and it's just kind of my feel on when we, when we contract out or get someone else to do it, I kind of like that, because then it gets done. We have a tendency to, oh, yeah, we're going to do it, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and it never gets done. We'll be sitting here, safety plan is one, we got stuff piled up on that that we still haven't addressed. So, it doesn't get done. At least when we pay, we know we're going to see it completed, you know, it's going to be done by time, by a certain timeframe that we're looking at getting done. As opposed to saying, oh, well, we can pay this, you know, we can have the students do this, or we can do it internally, and then it's never done, and then we're still sitting here, because I know we've been talking about a profile for, I don't know how many years, and we're still sitting here talking about it. So let's just pay it, get it done with, and then that's the end of the story, until it's time to update.
Well, I think, I guess I think the other.
They had to do re, I don't think that was all done in a year and a half. They had to do some assessments or whatever.
I think the other piece of that is, along with what you're saying, is the professional look of it all. I mean, I think having that website done by them was, yeah, I wouldn't have the ability to create that, and yeah, we might have some individuals who could do it, but I like the consistency, I like the professional look. That's part of what I like about the annual report. I like that, I like the graphics. I think it raises the level of our district to a more professional level and professional. And I think that's valuable, and that's what I would see with having them do, I mean, that's why the foundation went with them to do their brochure, because it does, it's people who are trained in doing that, and I think that.
I look at it like remodeling a house. You pay a contractor, they go and they remodel it, nine times out of ten, it's going to be great, because hopefully you did your research and you got the contractor that's going to do good work for you. Or you could say, oh, we can do this ourselves. And you do all these weekend projects, you put those two side by side, they can't, usually can't compare.
Yeah, but the contractor doesn't have in the floodplain.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just general, I'm just general saying.
We're not going to do a lot of breaking forth here.
So, that's what, that's kind of what you get. So, you know the general idea. I'm not talking neps and bolts or whatever.
Other, any other comments?
Just a comment to add that, you know, really, overall, for the price of what we paid, that's actually very, very reasonable for building a website. Incredibly reasonable.
I'd agree.
Um, Jeff?
I really think the website looked great. I think it looked great. But then, at 27,000 for the website, and here's, here's why, here's the way I look at it, okay, and you're going to disagree with me, it's fine. Recently, we had a teacher from, I think, Woinacaw, put out a call for people to donate, because she found a golf club place, and she needed like 235 bucks, right? Our underpaid teachers are giving her money so she can do this and get a match for this thing that's actually going to help our kids. And she needed the amount of money we pay her to drive from Fond du Lacire. It just doesn't seem like that's smart. Because, I mean, as great as our website is, we're probably the best website in the state, but that doesn't, it's not going to affect our kids at all. I mean, it's not going to affect.
That's a true statement.
I mean, I don't know how the website affects the kids in the classroom.
It's not just about that.
And I wish we had the resources to do everything, but we just don't have the resources to do everything.
Right, it's a matter of prioritizing, and for the board as a whole, the website was a priority, so.
But we, I don't know.
But we could, okay, if there are other, other kinds of, so what were you hoping to get from the discussion of this?
Actually, if this helps, I totally support Dan's approach and the list of things, and if we get that in that format, I think that'll take a lot of this off the table. We know where we're going, it's very clear. We know at what point CISA is still involved, they're going to finish the website, that's effectively all we're going to do now. Dan is going to continue working on things that are important to us. And we can turn around as a board and say, I want the school profile done by February 28th. We can do that. You know, and then he can come back to us with solutions for getting that accomplished during that time period, and one of them can be contracting back out. We can say yes or no. But this gives us a good, solid format for going forward. I think what's been difficult is not knowing exactly where we were and not having things completed within the timeframe we thought were going to be done, just like doing your house, just exactly.
So I guess, what were you hoping to get from tonight?
I was hoping for this to be communication, to update the board, here's where we're at, and explain why the website's not up yet. I expected that to be done long ago, and, but everything else has been right on time. It's kind of step-by-step, from the newsletters to the report and report and so on. That profile would take a week to put together, because all the information's been gathered already. All the stuff that we've gathered for the website now is just put in onto, you know, that one document. And so, so it's been, it is a lot of just upfront, here's the organization, yeah, clearly, the website is the largest piece here, you know, at the cost of that. The other thing, I guess I want you to be aware, CMS for Schools is a division of CISA VI, but it's kind of a standalone entity. The majority of school districts in Wisconsin use CMS for Schools to host their website, because they specialize, that's all they do is school websites. And so the other part of that is that on the backend, for our staff to go in to make those updates themselves, you know, it's very user-friendly, you know, compared to other ones. And so if you go with an outside designer, all of a sudden, well, what happens then, you know, when you switch and so on? So that, that's where, regardless of the cost, we're going with something that works with school districts, the majority of ones, and it does happen to be much cheaper than you would get with someone private.
I'm sure it is. Anyway, so, so you, basically.
So it's just meant to be information, and, you know, feedback, you know, moving forward, but to basically say, we're pretty much done with, with the CISA VI services after the website. And after that, you know, we have these small projects, and as we talk about the communication plan in the future, and hopefully, you know, continue to add on a thing here or there, we'll continue to have that discussion. It may be CISA VI helping, it may be done totally internally, it might be someone else helping, but, you know, it's something we need to continue to, I want to keep you informed about.
Okay, sounds good. All right, any other comments? Are we ready to move on? Then we will, I see Officer Fugelpants arrived a while ago, so we will go back up to administrative reports, item number three, and have our Dr. Ross and Officer Fugelpants come up and.
And whistle as well soon.
Oh, okay, and talk to us about.
Yeah, I guess I'll just pick you up.
Do you want to share?
Sure. Yep, should be able to do that. Okay, we're going to have a report tonight on, specifically on K-9 searches at the high school and GDS. And with regard to board policy, we have none. We have a policy on locker searches. There's certainly state statutes with regard to searches and privacy of students that we follow, that we, you know, have that sort of thing in our handbooks. And so with that, we'd like to explain, and as we're going through this policy review, it's something that you might want to have included in the policy, actually, as far as guidelines for these types of searches, and maybe expand on all of them. So before we look at developing policy, I think it's real important for you to understand what it is that we actually do and the purpose and. Okay?
Okay.
So I just have a couple of slides here, two actually. This is, in the six years that I've been the school resource officer, just the number of drug and alcohol incidents we've had at the high school, and glacial drumlin. High school's been steady, right around nine, 10, 11 each year. Glacial drumlin's been one or two each year. High school, obviously, is nine months out of the year, so that comes to at least one incident a month. Out of those at the high school, probably out of all, oops, six of those years only. Out of all those at the high school, probably about four or five of those are alcohol. All the other ones are marijuana, I think a couple were prescription drugs, and there's one ecstasy. The ones at glacial drumlin, one or two of those were alcohol-related, the rest were all marijuana or possibly one or two prescription drugs also. And that's just to kind of form the basis for our K-9 school sniffs. So I just went back the last five years, starting with last year. Every year except 2012, 2013, we conducted school sniffs at least once a year. Usually they try to do a fall and spring, but I think every year that I've been here so far, they've only been able to organize either one or the other. The Dane County organizes them, their K-9 unit, and then they use K-9s from various agencies around the county, including, Manona has a dog now, so we've participated in the last couple of years. So last year at the high school, we had two alerts on lockers, search for those, nothing was found, two alerts on car. Two alerts on cars in the parking lot, um, searched those, we found marijuana and drug paraphernalia. And the paraphernalia was actually a vaporizer, which is the first time we've seen those items. Um, we weren't even sure what they were. Uh, but it's just a, a way to, uh, um, ingest, I guess, marijuana. Um, the vaporizer, it heats up the marijuana just to the point before it, it burns. So basically it turns it into a, a vapor and then you inhale the vapor. But it's something new that's out there. It's marketed as a more healthy way to smoke your marijuana, if you look it up, so.
It's not like a hookah.
It is kind of like that same technology. Actually, yeah, it's a, it's a bigger version of a hookah. Um, but yeah, the hookah's, uh, I guess is a-
A cigarette, I think it's a similar technology.
Personal use version, I guess. Um, so two students were sighted in that incident. Um, and then we searched, uh, Glacial Drummond, um, the dogs did not alert on any lockers. The big difference between the high school and Glacial Drummond would be at the high school, we, uh, have the dogs sniff all the cars in the parking lot. Glacial Drummond, we don't because obviously none of the kids drive there. So the year before that, um, we did do, uh, the county wasn't able to, for whatever reason, there's, uh, some problem. They didn't do, uh, sniffs at all that year, but we had our own dog just go through MG twenty-one in Excel. Basically, I think that's the first or second year we had a dog just kind of for, uh, for practicing because we hadn't done MG twenty-one in Excel. And it was a small enough area where we could use one dog, it didn't alert, um, at all. Year before that, eleven and twelve, at the high school, um, dogs alerted on three lockers, searched those, nothing was found. Dogs also alerted on two cars in the parking lot. We found marijuana, alcohol and drug paraphernalia in one car, marijuana in another car. Um, two students were sighted in that incident. And, uh, Glacial Drummond, we, oh, we didn't do a sniff that time. There was some, uh, they weren't able to make it out there. Ten and eleven, uh, at the high school, two alerts on garbage cans inside the school. So not sure if the kids somehow found out about it or tried to dump their stuff, but we searched those cans, couldn't find anything. Um, I mean, dogs are pretty powerful sniffers, so I mean, even if it was just residue or something, they may have hit on it. Um, also alerted to one car in the parking lot, nothing was found in that, uh, car. Um, if anybody had sm- been smoking in that car in the last day or so, though, they would have easily smelled that and alerted to it. So that's a reason they may have not found anything. The year before that, two thousand nine and ten, um, alerted on, uh, one of the locker in school, nothing found. Two alerts on cars in the lot, nothing was found. And at Glacial Drummond, um, they did a, a sniff and there are no alerts. So pretty much every, so that's the last five years, um, I'm sorry. Four out of five years, we did do sniffs at the high school, every single time, dogs alerted. And then was it three out of four, we actually did, uh, find contraband and sighted students.
So I, I guess one of the questions, um, that we could, just because we had never talked, we've never talked about this as a board. And one of the questions is about the efficacy of this. The, do we feel like this is a sort of a proactive preventive measure, which is, which is the reason for it? I mean, we're not, this is, we don't do this as a gotcha thing. I mean, this is really, at least my understanding of it has been, again, not, it's not formally a policy. But that, the idea was that students know this might happen and therefore it's one more thing to discourage them from bringing anything to school. Because they don't know when it's gonna happen, even though it doesn't happen very often. So I think that's one of the, that, that's one of the things I thought came up with us is, in just various discussion was, do we feel this is something that we want to continue? Do we feel like it's been worthwhile? Like, do you have any thoughts on that? I, I guess I'm asking any of you to-
Well, anything, I would maintain anything we can do to, um, reduce, reduce the chance of kids bringing drugs on school property is, is within reasonable means is worthwhile. I want to certainly send a message to students that if you bring drugs on school property, you're taking a big risk of, of being caught with them. And I want parents and community to know that we're doing these kind of things for the majority of our kids who don't use and don't want to be exposed to that. That we're trying to minimize chances of them being exposed to it, to have students under the influence in school, to having drug deals going in bathrooms. Students do talk about it. They know that we do it typically every year, um, it comes up. I do think anecdotally that it's somewhat preventative, that kids understand if they bring it on property, it's a risk factor. It's also a way that when we do, you can say, gotcha, like anything else, we enforce, um, when we do a search, random search with kids at school, if we think they're in influence. You know, if they brought on, it is a gotcha. We also, it also gives us a chance to enforce, um, telling that we're taking it seriously, we're not gonna tolerate it. And the next step is, gives us a chance to get some kids some help. Um, some of these students are flying our radar, they're having, obviously having a number of issues. And I was just cited, but we also encourage and, and try to work them into some counseling and get them some help for what's going on. So.
So what, what, what does the dog sniff? What is he gonna sniff in the locker? Like, is it just marijuana? He's not, I mean, I know we talked alcohol, he's not gonna sniff alcohol, right?
No, no, pretty much, I mean, any illegal substance.
Any illegal, so heroin?
Heroin, cocaine, um, they can even, uh, I'm not sure what our dog actually is trained for, but prescription meds, I mean, I, I'm not sure what they're-
Because what, 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 it seems to me there's just as many false alerts as alerts. So if they false hit at locker, what does that mean today?
It doesn't, they're typically not false alerts. There, there may not be anything in there, doesn't mean it's false alert. The dogs are trained, they're ninety, I mean, the accuracy was amazing. The issue is there was something in there before and there's still residue or smell, but there's no substance in there now. So it may be residue on a student's coat, but you'll find a substance, the dogs are gonna hit on that. So they're not hitting on something, there was nothing there. In all likelihood, there was something there at one time, but when we do the search, there's nothing there at that time.
So technically, a, a student could have went to a concert, right? I mean, I've been to plenty of concerts for this, but-
Yep.
And they're hitting on that thing. Now, I'm accused, now I've-
Your locker's searched, you're not brought in accused if there's nothing found, no.
Right, so you, you search that locker without the kid even knowing?
Yes, we search, uh, on the spot. When we have a dog hit, we do a search, yes.
So the kid never, never finds out that you searched without?
We may very well bring the kid in and do a search as well, yes. Yep.
So you bring the kid and it's a false hit, and now what? Now that the kid is like, I mean, I, I know we, also we have a gotcha, but also we have an oops, and where does that kid, leave that kid?
Well, at nine hundred and fifty kids, we've had a, a couple, a year of these where we don't, where we have hits, we don't find anything. We're very discreet, we have to be very discreet. We bring kids in, we do it in the office, do it privately, go through things, we talk to them about what's going on. We don't find anything, we say thank you for being cooperative, we send them back to class. So they know, they know the routine, yeah, yeah.
And that alone is, I think, a worthwhile encounter with a kid who's, who may have been smoking the night before or may not have, we don't know. You know, but I think, I mean, I think that's, that'd just be my own reaction to that, that that's not a worthless conversation. I mean, I think that's a valuable conversation to have with a student.
I would agree.
And the student knows, they know whether they were at a concert and it was somebody else, or they know if it was them. I mean, they don't necessarily have to share that with you, but they know that. And that's worthwhile, I think.
And if you hit a car, it could be anything, right? I mean, if the kid takes the dad's car to work and the, I mean, it's not unheard of for parents to smoke marijuana. It's, so, I mean, I don't know. I just, I just think with the little that we're hitting, if you treat children like criminals, they're gonna be criminals. I'm just, I'm kind of against the, the whole person.
Any other thoughts? And I will remind people to raise hands, please. Um, we've been a little loose about that tonight, but Jess?
Well, I guess, uh, Sam, I have my own two cents. I think that's a really valuable exercise for certain. I think that it, it definitely gives all of our students the idea of, you know, we're not messing around. Um, and you're, as you said before, you're really taking serious risks and bringing drugs, uh, onto the school property. So I wholeheartedly endorse the practice. My question that I had, and I think you kind of answered a little bit, was if you do have a false, well, false hit so to speak, but just haven't, haven't found anything, then, do you have a protocol and then following up with that, students, you know, perhaps had a substance, identified as having a substance in their locker at a previous time? Wasn't, there wasn't anything found. Do you have a protocol then with kind of keeping that, that kid on, on the radar to kind of check back in with them or?
There's, there's nothing formal that we would do because we really don't feel like we can, um, do something. But certainly, um, however, we'll have a conversation with the student and we do it very discreetly and very respectfully. And if we don't find anything, we apologize and say thank you for being cooperative and send them back. But, uh, we do want them to understand that there's, in all likelihood, there's been something on their clothing or in the locker that, and that's been brought to our attention. We hope they're making good choices. So we take that opportunity to have that conversation with them about, you know, you've been somewhere or someplace in contact with illegal substances. Please make sure you're making good choices. And certainly that would, we don't formally record that someplace. But if something were happening with that student down the road, we would look for a pattern like that, yeah.
At, at the middle school level, I mean, it is, we do, whenever we do the search, whether it be the locker or ask a kid to empty their pockets, we do notify the parents. So at least it's an opportunity to have that conversation with the parents too, and say, do, do you have any concerns about anything that's going on? You know, the reality is, is that, you know, um, last year I had a, a handful of students confess to me that they do smoke marijuana outside of school. You know, so then I was able to have those conversations with the parents and say, did you know that your, your child is posting pictures on Facebook? Or has admitted to smoking marijuana outside of school? You know, and those are valuable, you know, um, conversations. And that leads the parents to seek treatment options or be more alert to their, their social groups, whatnot. So, um, and not just at our level, it's just really good conversations that either Renee or I are able to have or our student services staff.
Susan? Well, I guess, um, a couple of things. It is very clear, and this was passed in nineteen ninety-seven, so this wasn't yesterday. Wisconsin statute specifically addresses locker searches. And specifically says, an official employer, agent of a school or a school district may search a people's locker as determined and necessary or as appropriate without the consent of the people, without notifying the people, without obtaining a search warrant if the school's adopted a written policy, which we have on locker searches. So what we did was, because they passed the statute, we adopted the policy which allowed us to do that if we felt it necessary. So that, like, then comes to a couple of questions. One, what's an alert?
The dog smells something and each dog is, there's, they're either trained to passively or aggressively alert, so passive-
You're doing a search and an alert is an identification by the canine unit that there, there's a reason to search?
Correct.
Okay, and that's what induces you to search?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and when a canine alerts, it's actually probable cause for an officer to, uh, search.
And see, part of that is I just want to make sure we have all those components in the policy of your process and make sure that addresses that. And then, um, I don't have Board Policy four forty-six in front of me, but four forty-six point one is locker searches only. So if in fact it's going to be expanded to school district property, one, we have to at least create legal about whether or not, what our authorities were doing, and I think under the prohibition, we probably have, clearly there's statutory authority for the locker search.
We also have it in the handbook that's approved by the board. It's clearly in here that we have the canine search for grounds and buildings.
If we're, if we're gonna search, right now, all we, all we authorize are locker searches.
Well, then, then that's what we're talking about. That's why we're-
But I'm getting this also authorizes this, in addition to policy, this is also legal because it's in our handbook.
So it just means our-
There's lots of things that we authorize in the handbook that aren't name by name in the policy, as long as this is approved as well. If the policy wants to be added, that's fine, but having the handbook approved by the board is also makes it legal.
And when things are illegal on school property, obviously.
I mean, and, and there's, there's statutory authority. It's just we do want, just to, for the purpose of informing people, we wanted to develop a policy that was more clear on these things.
Yeah, if I could jump in real quick, I agree. When we get to the policy review on that, it is important we expand that, make it crystal clear.
But it's school grounds as well.
It's clearly arguable whether they get the handbook approved by the board or not, and there's no policy authorizing that to happen or enforcing the handbook. That puts us in a questionable position. So what we're trying to do is support you by finding out what you need to do, what you feel you need to do. So that if we have gaps in policy, we can address that.
Uh, Jeff?
So, I've, I don't want to not address the drug issue. So how many of those, your, your conversations you had were a direct result of a police dog search?
I, I would say probably none of them. However, you know, that it does lead to conversations for students, meaning it's a determinant, um, you know, for bringing marijuana to school. You know, we did have reports of marijuana being at school. So we did, Sean and I did, I believe it was the last day of school or the last week of school last year, we did do an investigation about the potential of marijuana being at school. Um, so, you know, it's something that we hear about. It is something that, you know, does have, we've had prescription drugs, you know, in lockers at school before. Um, so though my conversations aren't a direct result of a draw, a, a canine surge, I mean, there is a potential at the middle school level for that to be present.
And also, research says that, um, paper money can set off a, the, the police dog, is that something you've heard? Because, really, okay, because of, uh, despite spreading nationwide drug use, use of paper money, that has set off things. What if a teacher's car gets a hit? Do teachers' cars get?
We don't search, we don't search the-
Oh, you don't?
Yeah, right.
The high school, does that?
We'd want to throw a parking lot, we'd not have that happen. I've had it happen to the previous district and we did go through vehicle.
You did go through it, did you?
But I, I don't know what we're doing, this setting, we were, you came with district office, but we do both.
So that's something we need to work on in policy too?
Can we have a discussion?
There's a whole different set of, uh, yeah, required, that things you'd go through that we forgot to employees.
Some of that's maybe in our handbook, our employee handbook, I think there's, I don't, I'm not sure, I have to go back and look, but, um. Susan, you had your-
I, I was just gonna say too, the other thing that would be helpful is to know the other, again, think about language that's gonna allow them to search anywhere on school property.
Making it broader.
And then we can add the specific statutory authority to do the locker search. But if, if they're gonna go out and do cars, what if the alert is on a car that's parked on, you know, public street? You know, again, the overflow, you know, I, I don't know where the line is.
Police then have the authority to do that.
Okay.
That's there.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, uh-
And see, we could add that piece.
A canine sniff isn't a search per the Fourth Amendment. Um, basically it's just an officer walking his dog, and if the dog alerts, then it becomes probable cause of search. But, um, an officer can walk a dog through any public place and the dog is allowed to sniff anywhere he wants. And if the dog alerts, then it becomes probable cause.
So how did you search the cars?
Because the dog alerted.
Okay.
It's just from the smell?
Explain how it works, how you walk the dog through the parking lot, through the lockers.
And that, and then you, so the dog indicates that, like, there's a locker or a car? And there's an alert to that? If it's a car, what do you do next?
Park, identify a parking spot and then go get the street.
Yeah, we identify who the car belongs to, we'll call the student down, we'll give them an opportunity to open the car for us. We can actually, which we haven't ever done, but we can per, I mean, we can force entry if we wanted to because we have probable cause.
But you searched the car?
Correct.
Okay, so that's important. We just need to make sure that we have language that's overall conveyance of, if we're gonna do that, that it's here.
And I guess a part of what we were looking for was some consensus among those of you who work in the buildings and work with the students, that this is a viable tool. I mean, one of many that you have to deal with kids, this is something that you would like to continue to have access to. That's, that's part of what I think we wanted to hear.
You know, part, and I know that just because our schools do it, doesn't mean that we would always do it. But I can tell you the Dane County area, it's pretty common practice and they, they go around and, um, I would argue that students are aware. I think it does heighten their, um, understanding of risk to bring it on. We know from our Dane County surveys that we're not immune to the, we have a significant, I, what I'd call significant number of kids who are using, um, drugs of different kinds on a pretty regular basis. And, um, we want to do everything we can, I think, to try and get those kids some help. And I think we owe it to our, majority of our kids who aren't using it, parents, to do everything we can to make sure that they feel like they're coming into a school that is safe and free from that as much as we can make it. And I know that we only identify a couple, um, things, so this isn't a, a big kind of influence. But I, I think it's an important part of, of what we do. And if it makes any kind of difference, um, at least I feel it's worthwhile. And you do hear kids talking about it afterwards. They know that there's a chance that they could be coming through at any time, so.
Okay, that, that's kind of, I think I'm stating that.
May I question?
Just for the record, I, I support it as well because of the, the number of reports that we have from parents, students. As you can see, you know, proportionately, we have- Um, as you can see, you know, proportionately, we have, we have incidents at school and those are, you know, situations that we're aware of, that we're made aware of. But, um, but based on the data and Paul referenced Dane County Youth Survey, we know our students are involved and/or at risk of that. And it is in the community. Um, I also think it's a safety, um, tool or a safety strategy that we use. Um, and I would hope that somehow people feel that because we're taking those precautions, the school is operating at a safer level, you know?
Well, enough, then, Jeff?
Well, I, uh, I'm in agreeance with, with you on this. I, I, I do like the idea of whatever we can do to, uh, educate the students and also control any, any, um, any drug activity or anything like that that's going on on school, school grounds. I think it's, is a plus. Any chance that we can take to, to do that, I think is great. As long as it's kept random. I know we said we do it once a year, so.
We try, sometimes try to schedule it twice, but it rarely shows the ability of the K nine units to get called away.
So, and other schools are using those same units, so it's a challenge to get them scheduled.
I just hate for us to fall into a pattern where the kids know we only do it once. Hey, if we did it in October, so we're not, we're the rest of the year.
There is some of that because we, it's difficult to get them twice.
Especially the older students who.
That was actually, another question I had was if you've already done it, but then you do hear something like you said at the end of the year, you got word that there might be drugs coming into the school, could you then call them and have them come through?
Certainly request, yeah, if we can make the schedules work, yeah.
If, if it comes out, yeah.
And at the same time, I mean, we're held to a different standard than the police department too, um, the legal standard, so that's important to keep in mind, where we just need to have reasonable suspicion to search our lockers. So if, if I am hearing that, um, you know, from one or two different individuals that somebody brought marijuana to school or they're able to identify it, you know, that's, and that's reasonable suspicion, but, you know, especially if that's paired with, you know, any kind of reputation, whether it be right or wrong reputation, you know, that I can go in and search their, um, search a locker. And that has happened where we've done a search based on that or if, if somebody has said, and it goes the same thing, if somebody says, you know, that there's a, a knife in the school, you know, then we, we have the liberty to go and search for that too. Um, so I, I think that's another thing that's important to keep in mind is, is the, the lower standard that we have to keep our students safe, um, so. And when we do identify something, what, what do we take? What kind of action do we take? I know we mentioned, uh, a citation. What is that?
Yeah, I mean, so far it's all just been smaller amounts, obviously. If it was a large amount, during the way it's packaged, um, and, well, actually, we did have a couple, uh, students that, it was, it wasn't tied into school, but they were out about the community and they were actually arrested and charged with intent to deliver. So we did actually have a couple of high school students that were out there.
So is it just a citation as far as a dollar amount they have to pay?
Yeah, yeah, usually it's a municipal citation, um, unless they have a history or it's, uh, something a little bit more serious. We have the option to either do a municipal citation, which should basically be like a traffic ticket, they have to, they'd still have to come to.
So does a school do anything as far as?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a contact with, um, parents. We, there's an out-of-school suspension involved. If, um, there's not, if it was intent to deliver, we would, we'd talk about expulsion at that point. But if it's used, the policy is that it's, um, out-of-school suspension, the parent contact, then a recommendation for AODA support, um, from our counselors.
So we do have parent contact?
Oh, yeah.
Do they have to come to the school and meet with you or it's just over the phone type?
Yeah, if, if they're under the influence or they, we'd make them come get them. Um, if it's otherwise, if they're able to transfer themselves or not under the influence, we may or may not make them come in, but we would have the communication.
Okay, so is there just like, uh, hopefully most of them are just one-time scenarios, but do we have any that are like multiple offenders? And then it does, I guess, does the, I won't quite say punishment, but is, does that vary with each offense? Or is it?
There'd be progressive, certainly, whether it's alcohol or any kind of drugs. Um, if, yes, if it's multiple, if we see a pattern, then the discipline's gonna ratchet it up and we have authority to move to expulsion eventually. But, um, if there's a repeated pattern, we've been forced and we haven't seen a lot of that. Um, we've had some of that with our athletic code where kids are outside of school, multiple trouble, but in terms of school, um, we would, yes, the consequence would become more severe if there were a second or third offense.
Good job.
Are, are consequences more severe for more severe drugs? Or do you get the same with heroin or marijuana?
We, to be honest, unfortunately, we've never had narcotics in, that I'm aware of, in school.
Also, I understand that there's a drug, I completely understand that there's a drug problem, right? But how are we not seeing that with the police search? I mean, if we got eight hundred and fifty-two kids at Glacier Drummond and we're getting zero to one hit, I mean, I'm assuming, yeah, there's gonna be more than one kid, right? I mean, or the same thing with the high school, nine hundred and seventy-six kids, you're getting a couple hits, I mean.
I would argue this because part of our efforts are to make it clear to kids that it's not okay to bring it to school. And you're taking a huge risk if you do.
Right.
And I, so I think our kids that are using, what I hear anecdotally is that, oh, we have kids coming under the influence from time to time that we have to deal with. That I think they know if they're using, they're not using before they come to school. And if they're gonna be having possession, that's not bringing it to school. Doesn't mean that one doesn't slip by. I'm not gonna say that it'll perfectly be a school, but I think kids know it's high risk.
But still, I mean, the kids are gonna be smoking at home or whatever. It'll be all over their clothes, they bring it, they're cold, right? In the winter, I mean, that would seem, it seems to me that there should be higher hits if we're, with the problems, uh, cause I know that they're, I mean, they're.
Depends on what time of year. I mean, sometimes we're not doing it in the cold weather and they don't even have coats in with them. So, yeah, it depends and how, and for them to smell on coats, the dogs, it depends on close proximity. It's proximity and how much time has gone by. So there's a lot of factors involved with that, whether a dog's gonna hit on it when there's actually no drugs in the locker. But, um, I do think that students know that they're taking a pretty high risk if they bring it into the environment. And I think we have a pretty good population. The kids also will report to us if they know it's in school around. Not everybody, but I think we have a population of kids that would do that. So hopefully that's the reason that we don't see the same percent of kids that we get in research-based are using versus the kids we catch in school. And similar with alcohol.
Yeah, but it was interesting from the, the surveys where the kids self-reported that most of them are not using other illegal drugs, but a significant number are. Um, and so I think from that standpoint, it does make sense to.
I think that's one of the good things we usually do have is other students reporting, especially on the middle school level. I think you probably get a lot more of that than at the high school, but I'm sure you even have some at the high school that, that report about some of their peers. Um, so that usually helps.
Any other questions or comments? Well, when we, when this comes up.
So when we write the policy, we'll make sure we.
Sounds like a few things we need to add to policy.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, um, then we will go down back to discussion items. And the next item was public, uh, discussion of public use of school facilities.
Okay, this is another policy discussion. Um, again, as we, and this has come up before the idea of reviewing, you know, all of our policies about the, the school facility use. I think all of us would be in agreement that we want to maximize the use, um, for the public and we probably could increase the use, that, uh, we have a very complex policy right now with several different levels. And, and so, again, as we get to that policy to give our, our committee some guidance, we'd like to just talk, what would you like to see for public use? Would you like to, you know, for instance, things like youth groups that are community-based? Clearly, we all want that. Do we want to build, do you have them available for no charge? Um, what kind of charges? Are we looking at just trying to cover costs? What about for-profit groups coming in? Do we, we certainly would charge, how much? Just enough to cover our costs of, of, you know, utilities and so on? Or you wanna look at it as revenue-producing? So there's a lot of different factors. And then the other thing that Jared can speak to is, you know, we have a fairly strict policy with regarding to, you know, insurance guidelines and so on, and he can speak to what our options are with that and, and to maybe make it a little bit easier for, you know, for different groups. But, uh, just, again, an overall discussion about philosophy. What do we want for our buildings so that we can write a policy to match that to bring, you know, to the Board in the future? So, uh, we have, um, on the board docs, um, a couple of policies and administrative rules. Uh, excuse me, one policy, then administrative rules along with it, information about how to rent facilities, so there's a lot of stuff there. And, um, I know, before we start the discussion, Jared, anything else you wanna?
I think it's just to give us some kind of, because it's such a large policy and obviously there's one policy, the policy's pretty strict for it, is the administrative rules that are developed and that's where you're getting that insurance certificate. And for me.
You know, obviously the insurance company's gonna tell you to do on the more conservative side. And I think that's the question that we wanna ask as a board or as a district. How much risk do we wanna take, you know, if we're not gonna require that? You know, even with an insurance certificate, you have to prove there was negligence on their end and things like that. So, um, this policy and administrative guideline was written, obviously, before Dan arrived, before I arrived. And so I know there was some input. And when you look across Dane County, it's a very similar policy that Milton Cross Plains uses. Um, it, it looks like it's probably, Milton Cross Plain was probably the template of what we had utilized. And I know that, uh, I think for us, just getting an idea of what we sort of want so we can bring back to accomplish what the vision of the, of the board is.
I was gonna say, I think you picked the best time to discuss this, Dean, isn't it?
He'd be all over this.
But, uh, I, I think, I think we have a good template, um, going off of what Milton is doing. I know they rent, I've been to events at their theater, uh, at their stadium. Uh, and I guess, I have no idea how they do what they do, but I know they always rent out to different, uh, for-profit organizations. So I guess, I, I don't see a, uh, I guess I don't understand why we would have to go and reinvent the wheel, I guess, so to speak, uh, kinda see what they're doing and maybe adapt what they're doing to what fits us.
Susan? Well, I guess one question I have is, it's one thing for the policy to mirror Milton, but does our administrative rule mirror Milton?
Very similar thing, yep.
So for instance, does Milton charge their show choir? That's what we did.
We don't do that anymore either. We straight, we figured that out. I mean, we did, that was something that had to be.
Because there was a misunderstanding, because this is so difficult for people to understand that they don't know how to administer it. So I'm saying minimally, we need to fix this into something that whoever's administering it understands what the intent of the board is.
Just make it so.
Yeah, I, that was my thought, it could be cleaned up.
That's a, that's a great directive. That's a, that's a good piece. Something that if I'm, uh, athletic booster group, I can look at this and know what I have to do to be able to use a school building, whether it's to use the community room at Glacial Drummond or to use the auditorium at the high school. Again, I mean, if the lights had been working, we would've had a funeral in the auditorium in the high school. So, do they have insurance? I, I mean, I'm just saying, this is what happens when you write a policy like this, when you have an event like that. Do you say, I'm, I'm sorry, you can't have it here because you don't have a million dollars worth of liability insurance?
Well, I guess my point of view was that we wanna make it as least restrictive as possible. I mean, if we wanna fully utilize the space and, and kinda, I guess, help recoup some of the cost, uh, I, I think we wanna make it as least restrictive as possible because the, the more restrictive you make it, the less people are gonna use it, which is totally against, I think that's against what we put money into it for when the building was designed and, and all the updates that we, we've done to it was with the idea that at some point in time, we wanna be able to rent it out, uh, to maybe recoup some of the money we've invested into it and have the building or have that space kinda work for us as opposed to, you know, helping us generate more. So I, I think that's what we want our policy to do for us, so that we can rent it out. And say, for instance, you have some theater group wants to come and put a show on at the theater. Uh, maybe they wanna rent it for a month. You know, let's be realistic as far as what, you know, what they're gonna do. I know insurance always gets brought up. Um, but I, I, I know people that do it. Like I say, Milton, they do it. So how do they do it? I know they're not charging people, you know, making them say, hey, you have to sign, have a million-dollar policy before you're gonna rent this place out because they brought in, I mean, they, I've been to events there where they brought in nationally-known artists to perform there and do concerts. And I'm sure they didn't have to do any of that, so.
See, I think that's helpful. Simple, least restrictive as possible, encourage community use. And the thing that came to mind while you were talking about that was our pool model. I mean, we just won an award for basically community service. And again, Molly was doing it before and, I mean, they worked hard to provide, um, swim lessons and senior and active events and to bring the community into the school building.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think one of the main concerns has been that insurance issue. And I, and I would be interested in finding out what other districts do with that because I, you know, I know of at least one incident where a group was turned down by us because they didn't have insurance and they had to go to Stoughton instead. And I thought, you know, I, and it was a group that I, I think it would've been good to have here. And I, I also go back to what if one of our own students wanted to rent it for an activity? And it's not really a school activity, it's a family one. But they were inviting their school friends to it or something. Um, they aren't going to have insurance either. And is that something we want to allow on occasion? I'll go to a personal example. When my daughter was graduating, she did a senior vocal recital. And her, or her, she did a senior piano recital and her friend did a vocal recital and we had, but we had probably over a hundred people who came to that. We, we paid rent, we rented the high school commons, it was in the old building. Um, and it must've been before this policy because we certainly didn't have this insurance block. But that comes to mind. Later, some of her teachers came, it was a very nice event, and there may be other kids. I, I would think under this policy, I'm not sure we could've done that. And it's, it's that sort of thing. Um, and I, and we've talked a lot about wanting to see more use of the auditorium. So when I heard this, one group was turned away because they didn't have insurance, I thought, that was of some concern to me. And I guess, um, so I'm kind of with that least restrictive. And I, I don't know if you, you know, if, if it's a for-profit group that would be likely to have insurance, um, I, you know, maybe you can set restrictions that way, but when it's a nonprofit group or it's just a, um, a group of parents that wanna put together something? Um, you know, that's why I, I guess I'd be in favor of waiving that when we can and writing the policy, so that's not an issue for Jeff and then, uh.
I think, I mean, I think this is where the communication plan is at. I mean, this is public buildings and let the public use it as much as humanly possible. I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure we have, I mean, we practiced a little research on what, cause I remember as a kid going to Blount Memorial Gym and watching wrestling. I'm sure that needs, takes more than, more of an insurance than a, like, you know, our kids dance at Sun Prairie. I mean, I'm sure they don't have a million dollars, you know? But it's great to go there and it's great to open our doors to the community and let them come in, cause at some point we're gonna need a referendum. And if, if people are using our facilities, they're gonna have ownership of our buildings and it's gonna be a lot easier sell. Say, remember, you know, you guys have been using the gym, why don't you like to see it better? And stuff like that. You know, I just think, I think we need to be able to use it as much as possible, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna say, most, uh, profits, I think, and most, and most even nonprofits, uh, do have insurance, some sort of insurance usually, um, for things like that. Uh, but one other thing I wanna talk about, uh, is that we, I guess, one of the things we need to look at is what is, what is open, uh, what we wanna be open to, I guess, as far as what areas? I don't, I guess I don't know if I feel comfortable with every place being open. I think we have to, we need to specify what general areas, you know, we're, we're allowing this for. Um, and then also, you know, restrictions in place. I don't think it's just, you know, pretty much just open to any and everything, but.
Commons Gym.
Yeah, and have some sort of, maybe some sort of, uh, approval process, maybe to.
Well, and I noticed our current policy has kind of a list of, well, actually, this brings up a question. Um, I was approached by someone this weekend asking about why we charge fees for youth soccer to practice on our fields. So there's another example of, are we doing that? Do we wanna charge fees so that it covers our costs? covers our costs? Because obviously the more people who use our fields, the more maintenance we have to do. And I assume that's part of the reason.
Exactly.
And do we want to keep doing that? And then if we have to have custodians, obviously overtime or whatever, it's extra work, then we have to charge. That goes to rental fees, which is a little different than an insurance issue, which just keeps people from doing it entirely. So I, I think that there, there is, there was a list here of large, there's large group classroom, the orchestra room, the choir room, you know, of specific rooms, not every classroom, I think. I mean, I would agree with you there, but Jessica.
One of the questions I have, I guess it's not really the question, it's more open-ended in that, you know, one of the things that we start to achieve by investing money into remodeling the Nichols Building was to use, rent out this facility for large groups for conferences or instruction. And it seems like a lot of the things that we're talking about would be taking place outside of school hours, but I could see potentially having interest in using the conference facilities here during school hours. So I guess my thoughts are kind of being mindful of what that would mean for, you know, whoever's manning the door downstairs and bringing people in, you know, in and out and letting them in and would there be some sort of background check needed, you know, just adding that extra component of, of having our facilities being rented out during the school day. And I, I think it would be only relevant in this building.
Yeah, we have had, we've already had conferences here during the day, during the summer.
Exactly.
But they don't have, they can't get from here into MG 21, right, without a key? I mean, when they're in this building, or can they? They smile.
Yeah, so they could, yeah.
Okay, so that, so then that's, yeah, maybe that's insurance, maybe that's something to think about, if we want to see it that.
And I very much support trying to rent out our conference spaces as much as possible, day and night.
So far, the groups that use it during school time that were not, Menona Grove groups are all educated, education related though. You know, CISA's had some trainings here and, and our Dean County mentoring program and so is usually educators. That's a good point. We still, okay, we have people in our building and that should be something we should be aware of. Certainly if we had a, some sort of a for-profit or non-education group that wanted, you're right, we better have some procedures in place. Who's here?
So we'd still want some kind of classification rules, perhaps, is what I'm hearing.
Good to respond to the, I don't want to pick on soccer, but it is a good example. Part of what we've got in the policy right now is if, and particularly athletics, because that's a big demand always for youth, and we want to support our youth program. Philosophically, we've had, youth programs have gone through our park and rec because they should, we have them, we've had them come and use the facility. The struggle we've had, to be honest with you, is we really want most of our, most of our youth programs that we work with that haven't paid fees and so on, we go through that because it's all kids here, all, all kids are selected. We have selective programs out there and variety sports club programs where kids individually are picked and not every kid has equal access to. And a question we have and Jeff and I struggle with out of hand is, should they be able to come on and use the field the same as a program in the community that's giving all kids access to be part of the team and so on? You have, as we all know, we have handpicked, trial kind of teams and so on. That's something we feel like we've been pretty good with the current policy and we want to, I think Jeff and I would advocate for something similar than anything that we've reworded, is what is our philosophy of the district in terms of access for our kids? And what kind of programs will come in and should they have to pay or not based on that?
Well, do we charge, if it goes through city parks and recs, they don't, they don't pay for field use. But we do charge if they use our gym because that involves.
Oh, they don't pay?
So we have user agreements, two user agreements with both the village and the city. So if they run through the park and recs, they're not charged unless they're required a custodian, then they're charged for the custodian's time.
But nothing for the field?
Not for the fields or the gymnasium.
But, but soccer is not part of the park and recs.
So there's two different soccer programs that happen. We have some soccers that's run through the park and recs and then we also have the Menona Grove Soccer Club, which is run outside. And so the, I think the Menona Grove Soccer Club outside is charged, but the park and recs program is not. And I'm not for sure why that was ever established that way, so.
Jessica, this might be a tricky question to ask, but do you just have a brief synopsis of, you know, what we get out of that side of the relationship between, with the user agreements between the village and the city?
Yeah.
So we don't have enough athletic fields, like so for example, some of the softball, baseball diamonds. So when we utilize theirs, we don't get, we don't get charged and so we don't charge them.
Okay. So we do pay, we're just not paying?
Yeah, right. So we're taking care of it.
So we're trade-off, we're paying them, they're paying us, so it kind of wipes everything clean, so it's no actual exchange.
There's no actual exchange of money, money.
But we are getting paid something. So that's the difference between the sports group or whatever, they're not, they're not paying anything. So that's hence why we would charge them. So we are actually charging the other groups, but just, you know.
And you know, as you dig into it, some groups are charged, some groups are not charged and the, the philosophies goes back many years and so that's why we need to revamp everything and, you know, obviously Jeff and Christie do a, a great job, but it's just getting a clear picture of what we want and moving forward. And I think the key of having equal opportunity for everybody will definitely be an area that's pointed out in our future. You know, if it's going to be a select team, that they're not going to give everybody an opportunity, there's probably going to be a different, they'll fall into a different classification potentially versus, you know, everybody tries out and there's enough teams for everybody. That's one area that we, we hear a lot. I mean, for example, our Pee-wee football utilizes our varsity field. Obviously, when it's a cold or rainy season, there's a lot of activity on our varsity field. But making sure that we have some type of procedure policies in place that helps the people that are managing and approving it makes it easier so there's judgment that's happening on the side.
So do they, do they pay for Pee-wee football? I mean, because that's, that's not through park and recs.
No, they're not through park and recs, and I don't know off the top of my head.
I think that distinction makes some sense, actually. I mean, the city and village, because it's a reciprocal thing. Whereas if it's a private club, that's different. But, but that's not a select group. I mean, I think that's a group where anybody wants to play play. So I, I don't know, that's another distinction and one we can maybe talk about.
Yeah, I, I guess bottom line, I would think everybody pays.
It's not a city, not the city or village. I mean, I wouldn't, I guess I'd be hesitant to charge them if, if we get to use their fields, right?
Well, we're charging them, but we're just, like he said, we're, we, we charge everyone. Except they're, we're, they're charging us too. So, but we're trading off, they're, we're allowing them usage, I mean, so that's how we're paying. But basically, we're still paying. They're not just using our fields for free and we're not getting anything out of it. So we're really charging them for the most part.
Yeah, because we're going to actually.
So, I mean, as long as we stick with that same philosophy across the board, I think we're okay. Now, we have some of these sports groups, we're not getting anything from them, they're not paying any fee or whatever, then they need to pay a fee because our field usage is usually a big issue because that's where we're putting a lot of money in every year because of the high usage. So we just can't let, you know, any and everybody just come in and just use the, the field at will without paying some sort of money for us to help with the upkeep. So I think as long as we stick with that, I think we're okay. Even though, I mean, we're not exchanging, like I said, we're not exchanging money for, for instance, but we're using their fields, they're using our fields. So that's basically the trade-off that we have and that's where the user agreement comes in, in the play. So while we're not actually exchanging money, we are exchanging services, which makes up for it, so.
How do we handle the camps? Like I know there's basketball camp, show choir camp, all that stuff.
So it depends on which organization or individuals that's running it. So if this went to be a camp that's run through the athletic department, so a football camp that's sponsored by the district, there's, there's no charge. The camp fees typically develop to pay for the coaches or the t-shirts and stuff like that, so those are facilities. Now, if it was like the YMCA doing a soccer camp, the YMCA would be charged to utilize the facility because they're also charging, I think the key comes is that they're charging the students. We don't want them to utilize our facilities and be able to take that income and do something else with it so that those individuals do get charged.
So it really depends on if it's an individual, if it's a school-sponsored or if it's a nonprofit organization, but, so each of the camps are off a little different.
Do we have a lot of camps that are like YMCA?
We don't have a lot of YMCA camps. Most of our camps are really run through the, the athletic, or a coach, or a coach will do it and so we don't charge our individual coaches. If they're, what we've done over the last couple of years is that if they're a staff member and they're like, say, coaching volleyball and they're able to do it, then we, we want to offer up our facilities that way.
We usually have them run through the park and rec though.
Yeah.
And use it through it to make sure it's accessible, but our individual coaches will do it in the most.
Yep, so when the individual coaches do it, they'll run it through the, the park and recs because they also then advertise and do the whole registration, which makes it easier.
But they're charging, they're charging, park and rec charges a fee though, right? Right.
So yes, park and rec charges a fee and that fee then ultimately goes, turns around to pay for the coach's time or the t-shirts.
What about the janitorial services? Who's paying for that?
So the only time that park and rec is charged for janitors is if they request it. So for example, if it's during normal hours, they're not charged.
Okay, a camp on the weekend.
A camp on the weekend, there are times that we won't have a, a janitor come in because it's park and recs, they have their own access keys to our common areas per the user agreement. So we don't need to have a janitor, a janitor come in and open up the building because they already have access to that. So then cleaning will happen, they will report to Mark or that cleaner. So if it's, if it's a large group of the bathrooms, then we'll obviously bring those in and then we do charge and then that comes out of the camp fees. So, but a lot of times what happens is the, our first shift comes in on Monday morning and a lot of times they'll, they'll get everything cleaned up before the first group gets to school.
What about that show choir camp?
Show choir, we revamped over the last, last year, we'll put it that way. So the key of it is, is that if it's going to support a school-sponsored activity, it should really be classified as a school-sponsored activity and so those would be.
And I find, I mean, I think that's a perk for teaching here.
Yep.
Have we ever used our auditorium for anything but our own people?
A handful, it's not as much as we would like it to be. And that is also on the agenda along with a lot of other things to.
This is a pretty wide range.
And you'll notice that there's two administrative rules. One really talks about the school and the pool and there's one that talks about the auditorium.
The pool really, I mean, we really.
The pool really, I mean, if we can use that model that Molly and Catherine have really worked to move into our auditorium, that would be phenomenal and that's the goal of it, is to enhance that. Obviously, school-sponsored activities or school activities are always our number one priority for us.
I would assume the pool is where we really need insurance. Somebody could actually die in a pool.
Yes.
Somebody's probably not going to die in a pool.
And plus, we, we do have a staff member, one or two or three, depending on the size, we, we staff the pool because obviously of the safety issues. Yeah.
Jessica, this is another good conversation, I'm just wondering if you, what kind of direction are you looking toward now?
I, I think that's been helpful, the idea of, you know, the, making it as accessible as possible. I think the separate discussion is how much to charge. So the one policy will be about who gets to rent and who has priorities. Do you get park and rec priority over, you know, profits and so on? But then when we're all set about who gets to use it, it's a whole separate fee schedule and that's where I think we can get some recommendation here that we had and based upon that. So I, I think there's going to be more discussion when you actually see the policy. But I, I think, it sounds like what we're have is not too far off, but we, as mentioned, we can clean it up, make it a little bit simpler and maybe a little bit more accessible than we have right now and maybe a little more consistent. I think right now there's a lot of discretion involved and, and as mentioned, Susan gave a good example, you know, sometimes it's not crystal clear what criteria the group fits into. I think that's the biggest thing we really need to clean up, that, okay, if it's show choir, that's a school-sponsored activity, here's where it fits. So for me, this is a bit helpful, the discussion.
Susan. I just had a couple quick, when, when there's a private party in the pool, is there a charge for that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that's what they do at Menona too. And then in auditorium use, let's think, that we're Andrew Crystal Production.
Playtime Productions.
Playtime Productions. What's our approach with that, for instance?
You know, I'm not involved with the scheduling for that, I don't know. I'm sure, I know they have the new facilities request, I can lay out, but as far as fees and service.
And whether they have insurance.
I'm not sure how that works.
This is a good one, I don't know.
I mean, did Girl Scouts use their auditorium as well? They've used it for some, excuse me, some of their.
What, what would be nice is if we could, if it's easy, just if it's easy, for Jared to just kind of make a list of organizations that have used and whether or not we've required insurance so that we can see how those group and kind of help answer exactly the questions you thought we should address. And that was who can rent and then who gets priority. Because if we have some examples, it'll make sure we don't, it'll help us form our parameters, I think.
So kind of what, what groups, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify this. What groups have used the facilities and what have we char, who have we charged and how much?
Did we require insurance and then did we charge?
Okay, okay, then go ahead.
And just one quick, I guess a great example, a group like Girl Scouts, okay, who, you know, don't have a lot of money. What do you think would be fair to charge actual estimated cost of what it costs to run the lights and so on or a nominal fee that we, you know, it's only a nonprofit? Or, what do you, what do you have in mind for something like that?
Again, a good example, and we, we can think of those, that's why we, did we charge the chamber for the custodial services that were necessary to assist with the services on Memorial Day parade? I, I mean, I'm guessing, no. But those are, that helps us see the kind of uses that you want us to look at and group them and answer down those questions.
I personally, I personally would charge less for kids in our district than kids in another district.
Yeah. I don't think you can do that when you're charging it open. I don't know. I, I think we have to have a couple of different fee schedules, one maybe for nonprofits, one for profits.
Can I just make a suggestion that maybe what, what we should do is, is let you guys put together something and bring it to us and we can have a conversation around that instead of just this like, wow.
Well, we did want this first though.
What we tried to do, just so you know, we've been working on this for a year. And every time we start to bring it up, then there's board discussion about it. So we thought the best thing to do, bring this thing to the board, make exactly the list we just made and be able to answer some of these questions. And if we had written the policy before we answer the questions, then I would have had to go back and rewrite it and I really don't want to spend that kind of time.
So is that the next step, is that you're going to have?
We'll have a staple policy.
Right. I look forward to seeing it. Kind of to get a sense of what we might want to revise with the current one and, and I think, you know, the, the topic of the auditorium might even be a separate conversation because there, it's one thing to have policy about use and who can use it. But if we really want to make, and one of the points Dean has made when he talks about this, is if we want the auditorium to be promoted and we want to recruit use for it, that requires a different kind of job description for a staff person and maybe relooking at that. And so that's another, that's like a different level of conversation. So I don't know if we wanted to get into that now or not, I mean, tonight, or is that something we'd like to do in the future? I mean, the pool, that is kind of a, something that Molly starting, Kevin has continued, is promotion pool and trying to sell patches, get people in, increase participation to help cover costs and that kind of thing. And if we want the auditorium to use that way, that is another, I think it's another, it's a separate thing that goes beyond the policy. But I don't know if you wanted to address that yet or if you want to work out policy.
And I think that's a good idea because I, I think the pool, to get the pool to where it is today, it didn't start that way overnight. So it's been a continuous process. So I think, I guess I'd be okay with having somebody maybe on a part-time basis or, you know, somebody to start doing some of that work. And then coming up, I think the first thing we got to do is have, come up with a plan on what we're trying to do and then have somebody actively promoting that plan to where we get.
I, I guess I have taken it that, yes, that is something the board would like to see, you know, is more use of the auditorium and, and you really encourage that to promote, yeah, bringing it outside groups. So unless I hear otherwise, that is something that we would like to put together a proposal on, yeah.
So will other schools give us their policy?
Oh, yeah.
You can just go online and find it.
I think Milton and Sun Prairie would be two good places to start. Field, field usage, is that under the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of one of the facility groups.
Okay, so that would be a separate piece. So we would have field usage, pool usage and then theater and building use.
Yeah, it'd actually be, theater will be separate from building.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of a, this is a list that they have.
Well, and one of the other things we should look at, that comes to mind as Lionel brings up those points, is reciprocal school use. So for instance, Middleton, I think it's, has an agreement with Edgewood for joint use of like artificial turf, the field with artificial turf. So that may be another piece we want to put on there is reciprocal school use.
I'm not sure if reciprocal is a good page for that.
Yeah.
I think that is one of those and we certainly can't afford to have anybody using our field.
She mostly built a huge-
There might be other things. Yeah, if we had artificial turf, we could be talking about that.
But I just, I was thinking about the auditorium.
Right.
So there are some schools that don't have auditoriums, don't have facilities, they didn't have pools. We didn't have a pool for a long time, so we just didn't have a swim team. But in this case, you may have a school that would like to have a swim team, that would be, anyway, I'm just saying, that may be a-
Why would we do that?
No, I, there may be an opportunity for a school that doesn't have a facility like we do and they may-
They have soccer stadium or softball stadium.
I'm thinking more about that.
I was just wondering.
There you go.
That's what we need to do, find a school that has soccer fields that we can use.
That's right.
Do we have any fields that are as nice as our auditorium? And I don't think so, really. Our auditorium would really be the only thing that would be in there.
That's what I was thinking about.
At the moment, yes.
Thank you.
We do need nice fields.
Yeah.
Right, thank you. So then-
Oh, one other question, as far as our insurance, what are they looking, I mean, what are they looking for? Are they looking for specific items? I mean, why do we always throw up the red flag in reference to our insurance? Are there some sort of guidelines or some sort of restrictions that our insurance places in?
To be very honest with you, it really just passes the buck. I mean, okay, so for, that probably came across really general, but for example, if someone came in and destroyed our auditorium, we would file an insurance claim with our insurance, which means they would have to pay for that. If they put in the extra protection and say requiring us or asking us to get an insurance certificate from someone else, then they go after the other insurance company and so it's no loss out of their pockets. And so it's the concept of being extremely conservative, being overcovered in some areas. It's not necessarily that they're not gonna pay us because you still have to file, you know, there's still, you know, negligence that has to be proved if you're gonna go after someone else. And what they're doing is they're just trying to say, okay, you know what, you have your policy and there's another policy. So then we do have a route, because if they don't have a policy and say they, something happened to our auditorium, that probably is gonna be well over someone's homeowner's insurance. And so that's why they're encouraging us to get it.
Assuming a small court, small public school or whatever.
But then we, because I think they're talking about there's that, there's that claim level that, I mean, they're not able to get that. If they can have a relationship with another insurance company, I think the transfer of money and conversations are a little easier. That's my personal take on it.
So they don't require us to do this, but if we were, if we were to eliminate the insurance requirement, for example, would we be likely to see our policy rates go up because they would see that as increased risk or?
Not necessarily, it could, it could not. The wording that they used to me when I asked the question is they highly recommend that you keep it in your policy. It's not, they never use the word require. They don't say that they're gonna increase your rates because, you know, realistically, if you think about the way that our administrative rule is written, we can make everything a school-sponsored activity and then that really excludes that whole insurance certificate because we have our insurance. If we're gonna sponsor it and we just say that they have to pay the high school office for admissions, well, we now sponsor the program. So it's just the way that, that language was added in there, probably because of a request of the insurance company at the time. Plus, the difference too now is, is that when this policy was written, we really worked with an insurance company that worked a lot with private sector and I mean, school districts too, but now we belong to the state insurance fund and we also belong to Community Insurance Corporation, which is primary insuring public entities such as the Counties Association, many of the counties of Wisconsin. So they also understand that public sector of it. So when you talk to them, they're a little bit more flexible. They're like, well, we know schools are gonna be used a lot of times and they're not always going to be utilized by the school, but we would recommend this. So I think it goes back to when the policy in administrative rules was originally written. So, but they don't ever require anything, they always just tell you it's highly recommended.
Well, yeah, I could see why they would like.
Yeah.
Question. Kind of little offline, but is there a way that we can see how many claims we have? Like insurance claims, building usage against our buildings or anything like that in a year or?
Well, I can tell you since I've been here and we're up there, zero claims.
Exactly, so is there like, like all state, you get a good driver discount?
Like that. But it also means that, well, I don't know, I mean, it also means that the groups that use it, I guess, have had policies because we've required that, but we haven't had any.
We haven't had anybody here, so.
We could find that policy.
Yeah, so I mean, that's the thing.
And we haven't had any, if I would go back, I don't believe.
You know, usually if there's a hot topic, it's at least, goes on for a couple of years and that hasn't been something that's on my radar, so.
So what happens if you rent it out for dance and somebody breaks a leg? Is that's kind of where I always thought the insurance had to come in?
We would still have to be at fault.
And that's also the tricky part of the whole insurance thing is, we have insurance for a lot of things. However, in order for us to be responsible for paying for, they have to show that we had negligence. So like say they tripped over a stair. If we, if they could prove that we knew that stair was cracked and tipped and we didn't do anything about it, then yes, our insurance would pay for it. You know, one of the things is that we did at Glacial Javelin over the summer is we added the middle rail to the grand stairwell. There, we had a number of kids that would fall down that and chip their teeth or something like that. And we had a number of parents that would put that request in and we always would turn it over to our insurance company and they would never pay. And part of that is, is that the stairs that was set up right, it was, we had supervision there. It was just students being students, running and doing their things. So there was no negligence that was filed, followed. So that's even, even though when you have insurance, the insurance doesn't necessarily pay because they have to make sure that you're at fault and so. So anybody that comes into our, so if something happened and they would have to reuse their own personal insurance unless we were completely at fault.
Then the next item is teacher retirement benefits.
Okay, the plan that is on your board dock is the same one that you saw previously. Last time you saw it was on August 19th. Since that time, we reviewed the revised plan with teachers. We had three separate teacher meetings and all, you know, pretty good turnout. And so we went through, explained the revision. If you recall, the major change from, you know, the original proposal was to try to add a little bit higher benefit and taking into account longevity of our teachers. And so there are several, you know, people that were present, a couple of our board members around the committee were present and so we got some feedback and I'd just say the general comment, of course, would be that many teachers still saw it as a much lesser benefit than the, you know, current plan and they, you know, the trust would be, could we, you know, have more money and particularly on the cliffs. And if we recall, the previous discussion of the board was about how much of it we could pay as we go, how much would we have to borrow to pre-fund. And so, so at this point, the time wise, if the board is comfortable with the proposal as is, we would have discussion tonight and based upon that, if that is the case, next meeting we would be asking for action on it. After that, we still need to put together a lot of work, a lot of work has to be done to put together how the trust fund would be set up, how the investment committee would be formed, to who's gonna invest the funds and so on. But at least the plan as to how much the contribution would be on behalf of the teachers, you know, would be established by the board before we move on. The first payment would be not till the end of the school year, but I think the idea of getting something approved so that teachers have that certainty, here's what the new plan is on the dollar amount. So that's kind of the general overview. We certainly can get into any specifics of the plan that you'd like. I don't think committee members would like to, you know, start by any comments or Jared had anything else as well.
Susan.
Well, one of the things I'd like us to do was, there were a significant number of comments, particularly at the last meeting and there had to have been over thirty people at that particular meeting. The district office meeting only do two people. That was an evening meeting at the district office and then there was a nice number at Glacial Javelin as well. So I, I don't know, I'm hoping we reached everybody this time. About the tier, kind of the gap between tier two and tier three. And in the past, what we've done is the subcommittee has met, said it is what it is or is there something else we can do with this, we could at least have a discussion on it. I think that would be a helpful piece, so that there is one more subcommittee meeting prior to this coming to the board for final decision, so that the whole committee fully supports us after the listening sessions. And the other thing is that generally, then the handbook committee will dissolve. I think there is, the other piece I'd like to see the subcommittee discuss is whether or not there would be a benefit to some type of committee that works on, continues to monitor the retirement piece. Do we, do we need to expand this, is this the way it should be? Because we're gonna be doing trust investments and we're gonna be doing additional work on that and maybe having the committee include people with other levels of expertise in financial management. It's just a question, but I think there are two things that the board could benefit from a committee discussion from those pieces.
Actually, Dan, do you want to address the, because we definitely will have a committee, I mean, we have that one, so I do want to say something.
Yeah, so once this proposal or whatever proposal the board approves as far as the dollar contributions, you know, for the plan. Then all that is based upon, of course, that we contributed this, into this trust fund and, you know, so that's a very complex issue. How is that trust fund set up? Who manages that trust fund? How is the money invested? There's a lot of legal requirements about how we set up that trust fund. There's some things that would be discretionary with the board about, okay, who's the composition of that committee? Who oversees it? It makes a decision about who we invest our money with, with the risk and so on. Who's, what's the makeup of that committee? Those are things that you'll decide as a board. That's kind of the phase two of that, is putting together that whole management plan. And so that would be the idea that we would start with Jared and I and Nicole being involved with that of looking, okay, here are what the options are, some of the things that are very straightforward. School districts have things they need to follow and set up these trusts. And then we can, we need to determine that or you need to determine that as a board about how that process works in that final piece. But that is a whole separate process to put that together.
And I think what I would suggest is that it might be helpful for you and Jared and Nicole to discuss what you, a recommendation, what you think that should be the makeup of that committee because we've talked about bringing in even a community member, maybe who has this appropriate background. Clearly, we need people who have some financial expertise on that committee and at least one board member. I mean, I don't know what the composition would be. And then make a recommendation and then the board as a whole can decide if they want to approve that or add to it or have a discussion, I think, because I think the numbers should be loaded. And then also what you see is the purpose of that committee. And then will that be the committee that will be ongoing to oversee it as it goes on or?
Yeah.
Every year, I mean, I think it would be, rather than having us, it's a little bit like, you know, Jessica's coming up the last thing. I think, I don't think we're equipped tonight to come up with a recommendation for who should be on that committee, but I think if you made a recommendation, then we could respond to it.
I would agree, I'd like to at least bring a proposal with either a firm recommendation or at least options, you know, for the board to consider. And because right now, we haven't done the research about what those different options might be. You know, I had a discussion with Dean and one question he asked that I couldn't answer is, does that committee have the final say, when you put out our F P, decide, you know, who you're gonna invest the money with? Does the committee make the final decision of, yes, here's who we're gonna invest with and how? Or do they simply make a recommendation that this board has to approve? I don't know the answer to that, but I'm sure it's covered by statutory, you know, statutory. So I don't, but it will determine that, that is one of the things we'll talk about.
And I think what I understood you to say is that all of that would happen once the board approves a plan.
Yes.
And so the approval of the plan is the first step.
Correct.
And at that point, the handbook committee is disbanded and basically we start with this new group. That's, that was the recommendation, and that was our, we discussed this at the last handbook committee and that was our understanding at the last handbook committee. So, but what you're suggesting is you may want to see another subcommittee to just review this one more time, make sure this is it. And I'm not sure-
So, yeah, there were two, there were actually two questions. And one, and you've answered the one about the retirement committee, well, I think that's fine if you want to wait until that happens. I don't know that we just, Dean brought it up, but I don't know that we really had a committee discussion on it, so I think it's really helpful to have some-
We did, I have a strong recollection of that, I have notes on it, so, but go ahead.
Again, some clarity on that and again, to have the rest of the board understand that we were discussing that and kind of get there and put on that as well, I think that's helpful. The other thing was, there, I don't have a recollection or notes and I looked at mine too, one last shot at that tier two, tier three cliff piece. And it may be it is what it is, but I think it would be helpful to ultimately, when we come to the board at the last, if it is the next meeting, to be able to say, we've had one last discussion on this major concern and we can't do it because it would cost us this much money, or we could do da, 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 da. I think that because that was a major concern and we've addressed all the other major concerns from the listening sessions and we've been able to look the staff in the eye and say, we've had these discussions. I just think that would be a good faith piece and it isn't that difficult to do.
And I guess the only comment I would have as a, as a committee member, and I was only able to attend the last two presentations. We also discussed at our last handbook committee that these were different. They weren't just input listening sessions because we already had listening sessions for input in each of the five buildings. And we did take that input and we did modify this plan based on that input. And we were regarding this really as pretty much the final plan. This, the point of these meetings, as I understand it, as we discussed in the committee, was really more about presentation and to take questions. I think there was a pretty strong sense, and my understanding of the concern was more the second tier people. It was the cliff between tier one and tier two.
Two and three.
There, there's concern about all, both cliffs, but tier one, tier two was the biggest one. And then there was also a tier two, tier three. But there, they do have an option to move into if they're in that borderline number of years. So it's, so it does come to, and Jared made the offer very clear that anyone who had, wanted to come in and talk to him individually about their individual situation, he would talk with them. And I know some of them are talking with their financial advisors. In fact, I met the mom of a financial advisor to some of our teachers who happened to be at that last, at that high school hearing and I didn't even realize he was there, but he was listening also so that he could advise his clients on what to do.
Well, and this is-
So this is, and that's something, the education piece is another big piece of it, which the committee will have to talk about also. That's for that next committee that gets set up. So I guess we can talk, I don't know, I guess the point of tonight was to sort of let you know that that's sort of what the, and I think it was clear to you all because this was presented, the changes that we made in response to the questions that were asked before. And to get a sense of what the three of you who aren't on the committee feel about, where you think we are with the plan, if you think this looks good. We had agreed earlier that we couldn't borrow any more money, so there really isn't any more money for doing anything different for tier three or for the years of service award.
It would only be redistribution. That's, again, the exact discussion that you just had in that period of time was exactly what we do in committee. And what I'm saying is, let's take it back.
And what I'm saying, wait, wait, what I'm saying is, tonight, we have three board members who I just want to see if they feel this is done, that doesn't mean we can't meet again.
Okay.
But the point tonight was to get their input. Do you feel like we're ready to go with this? Do you feel like we should continue to work on it some more? What would be your direction if you, if you have any thoughts?
Well, I guess, my first thought is, thank you so much for doing all of this work because it's, it's obviously a ton. I feel really comfortable with where it's at right now. I mean, as you've already said, we can't, we can't borrow any more money, so.
We can redistribute the amounts that we've allocated. And maybe we would decide not to do that, but we haven't had that discussion in that cliff tier, which was brought up with by at least fifteen or twenty.
I'm not sure redistributing is an option. I mean, the only, the only, the tier two is a pay as you go, so that's not a budgeted item right now. It would be a matter of if we wanted to commit in future years to pay more money, to put more money in tier two, we could do that. But there's, the only, the only room for redistributing anything would be to take what one teacher suggested to get rid of the years of service award and roll that all in and give that to the tier two people somehow, spread it out among them in their salaries. And I don't know how much difference that would make.
I think it's tier three, it's tier three that's concerned about the cliff. It's the teachers in the middle.
Okay, well, it's, you know, you heard it differently than I did, but anyway.
I kept the notes from the-
Could I hear from you two if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I just want to echo Jessica's, you know, hats off for doing all the hard work, all the light work on this. I just kind of think we are what we are, there's nothing that we can really do. I'm not sure if I want to reallocate the funding because we're already, whatever we do, somebody's making a deal.
That's the bottom line. That's the bottom line.
Just kind of stuck, I guess.
To me, I mean, to me, the number one goal is teacher retention. So how do they, how do they feel about it? If they're all upset about it, then it's not a great thing, we need to do something else.
The tier three people pretty much are, they're here much for that, and they're pretty happy about it, because they're the, you know, they're the younger people that have got more time to serve. It's, they think it's a great plan. The tier two people really are the ones who have some concerns, because they're, they're stepping down from that tier one. They're in the middle, they didn't get the benefit of the salary bump that the tier three people have gotten. They've got the years of service in, and they're not feeling overly positive. And yet, when you talk to, because this person's other comment was, because her husband is a financial analyst, was why you guys really did a nice job here, this is really a nice offer. So it, it depends on, you know, but it's not the same as tier one. I mean, it's definitely not the same one.
Tier three, I think, are generally going to be younger teachers, so they, they don't have.
They go from a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to eighty-eight thousand dollars. It was tier three that expressed the concern.
Excuse me, Susan, could you let me know?
The biggest thing is that they haven't lost anything. And that's where the big problem, the big question comes in, when you're stepping down, or you're used to getting, you know, certain, certain funding, and now all of a sudden, you haven't taken a decrease. So tier three, I think, we're all, I think it's going to be the people in the middle that's going to have a concern.
What are our comparables?
Well, this.
This would be the best plan in the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, you have to keep in mind, I mean, our problem is, we're coming from the best plan in the state, we're stepping it down.
Yeah.
And so it's, that's been the thing we're wrestling with. And the tier two is a transition tier. They get that, the teachers get that. They just wish it could be more. We all probably wish it could be more, but the reality, I think that we feel like the reality is, this is what, what we can do, and we clearly had to step down from that other tier. So as far as.
I think our younger teachers are okay, because, I mean, we've increased pay.
They said that we're, that's what. In fact, the number of the tier, three, two people said, they understand that it is a great plan for tier three. I mean, that is the, and the cliffs are always an issue now, and that's, there's no good way to do that here. So that was, I mean, that, that was the bulk of, of what it was, I think. There were a few, a few other questions that were raised that we talked about a little briefly after, and that we couldn't really do much about either, so. So I, I think the plan was to bring this back, probably at the October 22nd meeting. We could talk more about whether we think there's a need to have another meeting in between, but to bring it back possibly for approval, if the board doesn't have further concerns or feel that they want to do anything different.
The intent for the meeting was not to interfere with the scheduling of the plan. It was to have one last discussion. I think based on this discussion that we just had, minimally, it would be to clarify what the concerns were that were stated at the listening session.
And we can, we can, we can discuss that, we can discuss that later and see if we want to call another meeting.
That's fine.
And it may be, well, yeah, maybe a challenge, I'm not sure when Dean, well, Dean's, he's only gone for a week, I think. He'll be back, so.
He was one of the ones who wanted to do that. I, I also wanted to do that. It just gives us a clear.
Oh, I can email him, he is checking his email in China. But, because he didn't voice that request to me, nor, and I don't know if he did to you or not. I don't think he did, so I, I didn't hear that, if he.
So again, if two of the committee members don't.
We don't have to decide that tonight, that's what I'm saying. We can, we'll discuss it later and decide whether we see a need to meet again, or whether we really feel, I mean, my, again, yeah, of whether we really feel that this is, this is it.
I guess I will add, and I think as to your point, Susan, that if you look on the document on page four, the example for teacher three, that is the person who is at the top of tier three that just misses it with the cliff. There wasn't a concern expressed there too, about, you know, the difference between the end of tier two and beginning of tier three. It's someone who has quite a bit of experience, and so that example for teacher three is someone with fifteen years of, in the district, forty-five years old. And to your, you know, point, Jeff, is that someone that we could lose, you know, for retention if the plan isn't, you know, comparable to what they might probably get in other districts? And, you know, but there's also the part about, again, trying to, the fairness issue as well. So the one thing that was really difficult to talk about is, in the samples, you see, here's what the dollar amount would be on a three percent return versus a five percent versus a seven with nine. Jared was really careful to not say we're going to get a nine percent return and say something that's not realistic. So everyone looked at that three percent, which is a safe number at eighty-eight thousand. But remember, even the people from WA Trust said, you really should be looking at the five to seven percent is what you should expect with that. And so really, a more realistic number is between that one oh five and one twenty-five. Yes, it is still a step down from that tier, but you can't, it's not a guarantee. So I know we have to be careful, but potentially, it's, it's not as dramatic of a cliff as, you know, it might seem.
The, what they stated at the committee meeting was, they used the figure of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and they said, and then for me, I'm going to be in, and they were using a figure of eighty.
Right.
The eighty.
Right.
So for instance, if you look at the jump between tier one and tier two, if you take out the Medicare payment for the, the additional years, which this board was not going to approve anyway, you take that straight off the top, which we talked about showing that, and we actually haven't. And then you look at this single payment plan versus the family payment plan, just at least twice as much. You will see that we not only, in tier two, between tier one and tier two, we not only match it, we're higher at the top of tier two. The cliff that was expressed in the meetings was.
Yeah.
Between the one thirty-five and the eighty.
Yeah.
And the cliff for the people who are on the family plan, which is most of our employees.
Exactly right.
So there is a cliff between one and two, which was, I heard over and over again, and those were the people, I can tell you who they were, I'm not going to name them here, but they spoke very clearly at the last meeting about being disappointed and feeling sad. We get that, but we, we have heard that, and that's, you know, it's, it is a difficult thing. And I just don't know that, that there's much more we can do, we can, we'll talk about whether to have another meeting, but it's.
I just wanted to make it clear that that eighty thousand, that was referenced, it could be, but that, it also could be a hundred and twenty-five, depending on the rate of return of the investment. And so that's the, the tough part is, we don't know exactly what will be.
It could also be sixty-five.
And I think, I think the other reality that we've talked about is that this is a TSA. If it's pulled out earlier, there are penalties. So I think the result of this is, we are going to see teachers teaching longer. I think you're not going to see retirements at fifty-seven, it's going to be fifty-nine or sixty, because that, they can maximize these features that way. And that used to be the way it was. I was just talking to some other retired teachers the other day about this. And they said, you know, back before this was put in, teachers did teach longer. And then it was put in to help sort of early retirement, and then there was a lawsuit about discrimination, and it had to apply to everybody. So it's, it's something that's kind of morphed over the years, and I think we may be going back, kind of as you're seeing in the, the private sector as well, people working longer because those benefits are changing. And so it's, it's reflective of that change as well. Whether that's good, bad, and different, I think that's a fact of the, of what it's going to do for a lot of people, depending on their individual circumstances. Anyway, so, okay. So I, I guess I'm sensing some general satisfaction with it. Jeff, you look like you've got it.
I have questions, I don't know. I'll have to, I don't think, probably simply that one question, I'll ask you at another time, so.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Then, we have future meetings right here, we have policy.
I just want to mention, again, Joyce, thank you for posting that. We've updated that time for that meeting to seven o'clock.
Oh, right.
Thank you.
Yep. I did say.
Scheduling seven.
And then our next board meeting, and that's, that's it, and so if there's no.
I'll just make a quick announcement, those are the personnel committee. I just, just got an email, staff knew some potential dates with MGA, so I'll forward that email to you in the next couple of days, and hopefully we can get something that works.
Okay. It's, so they're not meeting on the thirtieth?
Correct, that one.
Right. So if there's further questions, take a motion for a German. Sir, a second?
Second.
Always a favor, same for the same, ah, opposed, please.